Okay, it is now seven o'clock and we're going to reconvene to public session. And we'll start with Ryan Green and the flag salute.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And for those that are present now, just to let you know that items 11 and 12 regarding weapons on the school campus has been pulled for the same reason. And well, before I go to you, Richard, let me make another announcement. We have Richard Varner, who is now officially our school trustee-elect, and he's joining us, so that's always nice. Okay, going on to agenda item number five, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have a very short report. I just wanted to thank the board and let our folks who might be watching tonight know about the joint meeting that we had on the 21st of June. I thought it was a terrific meeting and came away feeling energized and grateful again for the opportunity to live and work in Carson City. And I'd like to thank you folks for attending and for staff who are here that were also part of that presentation. Thank you.
Going on to board reports, Ryan? Laurel?
I just would like to thank our city and muscle-powered and all who were involved in hosting the Carson City Off-Road Epic Rides. My son and husband competed in the Capital 15 and it was a really good event. And I'd like to congratulate our district's Brian Wallace, who placed fourth in the Capital 35, which is really awesome. And also, I know Rod Butler did it. I'm not sure if he did the 35 or the 50, and there were quite a few other people that probably I missed, but a lot of locals in that as well. And then last night was the NASB conference for the directors, and so one of my homework assignments is to ask fellow board members, what are some issues of legislative concern that you have for the next legislative session so that we can get some of those to Jessica, the NASB -- what is she? She's our representative. Public Policy person, lobbyist, to include those. So if there's any matters that you'd like to review or interests of priority that you have, let me know so that I can get them for the next meeting, teleconference on August 6. And also, if you have any questions or any recommendations or suggestions about content that should be included in the new trustee orientation at the conference in November, let me know. I can pass that along to Dottie about any content you'd like to have. And then our new board member, there will be school board training and a conference coming up in November, November 15th in Las Vegas, so you can talk to Renee. So, thanks.
Done. Okay, Joe?
That's right. How's it going?
Stacy?
Just a little bit more update on the NASB 2 thing. We have a position open for the Education Committee of States, which is currently held by Carolyn Edwards, and she is termed out, so December 31st. And we sent out a letter or an email, and I don't know if everybody got it because nobody applied. So we're putting it back out there. And she's going to this conference. They meet twice a year, and she's there now in Washington DC for the next two days. And after that, she's going to give us a report so you can kind of know what it entails if you're interested. And that letter will go, you'll be our nominee to the governor. And then on a sad note, Dottie is not renewing her contract, so she will be done December 31st. So if you know anybody out there that might be interested in being Executive Director of NASB, if you want some information, let me know. We discussed after the teleconference what we're looking for and what qualifications and what the whole job description is. It's been pretty loose since we've had Dottie, so it was something that we had started tightening up. But if you have any suggestions of who, of what characteristics or things that you'd like in the next one, let me know. And we're going to meet again on, like she said, August 6th to bring that up to see what direction we're going to go and how to get the information out. But just to give you a heads up, if you know anybody that might be thinking that way.
The new president, net. I'm going to toll on her.
Right? That's what everybody said, too. Yeah, it wasn't me, honest. I'm sure I put her through the throug, so she's worked really hard with me this year, that's for sure.
This is too much work.
She's like, "Too much work." Pam Perdom, who's supposed to be the next president, called me and said, "Did she quit because I'm next?" And I'm like, "No." It was definitely me, so. But I won't be there next year as president, so whoever's interested won't have to put up with me.
Thank you, Stacy. You know, I would just, you know, follow up on what Richard said about the joint meeting. What was good about that, I got to talk to the individual board supervisor members, and they really appreciated the information and updates that they were given at that meeting. And that's a tribute to our staff. I mean, that was, it was just, it was just nice to sit back and be very proud of the presentations that were made. And so, Joe?
Yeah, just to add to that, you know, a while back, we would have these, and because it's such a long day for the board of supervisors, one of the comments they had were, you know, they wanted these meetings to have a little bit of substance. They were just kind of light and, you know, they wanted a better flow of information. And I think we've heard that and we've done that. And I think they, I agree with you, I think they are enjoying these more and we're able to get, you know, inform them of things and get deep, you know, a little bit deeper into issues. And I've heard good feedback from them about that.
That's information they can use, talking about people that want to move to Carson City. So, it's all good. And then also, just to let you know, the groundbreaking at Pioneer was just amazing.
And you did such a great job operating. I don't even know what that machine was called.
Usually at ground breaks, it's just shovels.
I don't either, and I was up there, yeah. It was, but it had a lot of power. So, anyway, if you get a chance, just drive by and watch the, you know, what's going on, and it's going to be completed by Valentine's Day 2019, so.
Thanks for doing it.
Okay. With that, we'll go on to agenda item number seven, association reports. Seeing none. Agenda item number eight, public comment. And anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and talk about anything that is not on the agenda, just come on up and seeing none. We'll go on to agenda item number nine, presentation of possible action to approve the renewal of the property casualty insurance package with the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool in an amount not to exceed $592,304.36. Well, that's pretty good. Self-insurance bond in the amount of $3,220 and excess workers' compensation policy with the state national insurance company in the amount of $44,063 for July 1, 18 through June 30, 2019. We've got Ann and Mike. And I know you're going to go ahead and just, but tell me, the big amount, 592,000, is it the same as last year or is it more? And if it's more, why?
Yeah, and we'll get to that. I have kind of some information that'll explain that increase and what causes that. So for the record, Ann Seer, Risk Manager. Good evening. Ryan Garaventa, our insurance agent from Alpine Insurance, was unable to join us this evening. He normally does this presentation, but he's on a knee replacement, so I told him I could handle it with the help of Mike Rebeletti from the insurance pool. So I'm going to just kind of take you through the numbers of the renewal this year, and then I believe Mr. Rebeletti would like to expand upon that with some explanation about the programs and the services that the pool offers, okay? So just briefly, I know most of you are aware of what the insurance pool is, but I just wanted to take a moment to remind all of you that the pool is a large group of public entities that self-insure as a group. We are not buying insurance from a traditional insurance company. These pools are commonly referred to as governmental risk-sharing pools. Carson City School District joined the pool about 16 years ago. You sign an inter-local cooperation agreement, and in that agreement, we essentially agree to self-insure for property and liability with all of these other public entities spread around the state. That includes counties, cities, towns, general improvement districts, and all of the other school districts, with the exception of Washoe and Clark. They are larger school districts, so they are able to self-insure themselves without assistance from another entity. Nearly all public entities all over the country are in an insurance pool unless they're a really large entity and they self-insure. But even in some areas, you'll find really large public entities pooling together and forming these municipal risk-sharing pools. So the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool is the fund that we call pool. You'll typically hear these two funds referred to collectively as in Pool Pact. The Property Casualty Fund is the pool, and the Workers' Compensation Fund is PACT. That's the Public Agency Compensation Trust. We are not actually members of PACT because we self-insure for workers' compensation. So I just wanted to clarify that because oftentimes you'll hear people referring to these two entities as one, and they are actually separate. And so we are members of pool. Benefits of pooling, as I just mentioned, we are not a part of a traditional for-profit, publicly traded insurance company. Those publicly traded companies exist to pay profits to their investors in the form of dividends, and in order to pay those dividends, they have to build in a profit margin, right? So a municipal risk-sharing pool does not do that. There are nonprofit organizations that exist to serve their members, almost kind of like a co-op. And so they have an actuary look at the loss experience for the whole group and advise them on various acceptance levels where they should be funded, and then they determine assessments for the members based on that amount. And that amount does not include a profit margin. So that's how governmental entities are able to save a lot of money by pooling their risks. If they are profitable on their investments, those profits remain in the pool fund, and they usually then dip into those profits to create additional services and programs for the members. So that's how that continues to expand out and benefit the members. Some examples of that, and I'm sure Mike will expand upon this a bit, but we have human resource services, legal consulting services, lots and lots of training programs. We have risk management grants that are available to us. Our school district benefited from one of those grants a few years ago when we received $120,000 from the pool towards our surveillance system. And they also include very broad coverage. So the insurance coverage that we're getting in this pool, they write their own coverage forms, so they can include coverage for things that are typically excluded by traditional insurance companies. And with each year, they can continue to expand those limits and add coverages. So you might recall, a few years ago, we included student accident insurance, and they didn't charge us for that, they just paid for that out of that surplus. And then this year, they expanded that coverage again and increased the limit of the student accident coverage.
Well, actually, we got a grant, too, for Jeff Kay to come through and do his assessments for safer schools, too, through Pool Pact, right?
Right, right. So that wasn't a grant. That was actually a program that they funded for all of the school districts.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But a good example of another service, yeah. So under the coverage, and you'll see this all in your packet items where it talks about the coverages afforded by the pool, you have a $300 million per-loss property limit that's shared amongst all of the members. $150 million in flood and $100 million in equipment breakdown, or what was traditionally called boiler and machinery coverage. Auto physical damage is also included in that $300 million property limit. And then on the liability coverage, we have a $10 million combined single limit. So if you are a business owner, you might be more familiar with commercial general liability and then commercial auto liability and employment practices liability. All of those different types of liability are combined into one single $10 million limit under the pool's coverage form. And these are examples of coverages that have been added over the past five years. They included cybersecurity event coverage with a $3 million limit, environmental liability coverage, and the student accident insurance. These are all types of ancillary coverages that we would traditionally purchase in a separate policy, but we're just including them in the pool's program. And if you have any questions about those, I'll defer to Mike. Property trends, this is an important part of what we're going to be talking about tonight because this school district is growing. So we keep building new buildings and improving existing buildings and acquiring more autos and equipment, and that means that our total insured values, or TIV, just keeps increasing every year. And that drives up the cost of the insurance program because every time we increase the values, a rate gets applied to those values. That's how the cost is calculated. Rate times exposure equals premium. So our property losses have been, you know, pretty low. We had one year, 2014, where we had a pretty significant flood loss at Student Support Services. But other than that, they've been fairly stable. 2012, 2013, we were loss-free. 2014, we had one large property loss. 2015, we had a smattering of small losses. 2016, couple of similar situation. If we look at those, so this is the history of the pool assessment, what we were paying to the pool each year. You can see it's fairly stable. It inches up a little bit each year, but it's really pretty much in line with our increasing values. So this again is your total insured value and your member assessment trends. So the assessments are the orange line, and the green line is our total insured values. And you can see how those two items are kind of tracking right along together. So the renewal assessment for this year, based on our existing deductible of $25,000, is $592,304, which is an increase of $76,239.72. We also have an option to increase our property deductible to $50,000, and that would bring it up to $564.451, an increase of $48,451.41. The recommendation on the deductible is to consider this $50,000 deductible. And if you look at this little scatter chart here, you'll see all of these little orange dots down there at the bottom, under that $50,000 line, and in most cases, right around or under the $25,000 line. So general practice on a deductible, you want to take a deductible where you're assuming a safe amount of risk, a predictable amount of risk, but you're taking on what you can manage, and you're saving that insurance for the big loss, like the loss we had back in 2014, right? By doing that, you're saving some money on your property insurance over the long haul, kind of like how you choose your auto premium, your auto deductible. So for example, on the $25,000 versus the $50,000, if we looked at 13 property losses over the past six years, on the left column, you'll see the amount of the property loss, and on the right, where it says $25,000 deductible, you'll see that portion of the loss that we bore, okay? And then on the $50,000 deductible example, the same information. So the difference between these two is about $60,000 more in deductible expense over a period of six years. So if you look at the difference in what we would save this year, $27,788.31, and we project that over five years with a similar loss experience, we would expect to have a projected savings of roughly $106,000. So that $50,000 deductible actually makes a lot of sense for us, okay? So I'm going to stop there, and if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer those.
You know, I have one question. Where, assuming we do nothing else, we're approximately $600,000 cost. Given these coverages, and you said the pool provides more coverages than maybe other insurance entities, but have we gone to get any kind of quotes from other insurance companies to see if the pool is in line?
We have not. I can tell you that other school districts and other public entities, usually a couple of them every year will go out and look and see if this is still the best, in the best interest of their entity, whether it's a city, a county, or a school district. Usually, it's the earthquake coverage and the employment practices coverage that they can't match. So within the Carson Valley here, we have a pretty significant earthquake risk, as I'm sure you know. And when you look at the amount of total insured values that we have, to go out and buy earthquake coverage with a $50,000 deductible is nearly impossible. You would most likely get an offer of around $15 million for limits, tops, with a 15% of loss deductible. So when you purchase catastrophic coverages like earthquake and flood as a large group, you have a lot more buying power than going out as an individual entity.
And they offer more than just that premium. I mean, there's stuff, if you go to a regular insurance agency, we're not going to get all this training and...
They don't offer grants. They don't offer training.
Yeah, there's a lot of extra stuff that we get with Pool Pact that we have really taken advantage of, too. And I think that's...
It's the pool, not Poolback.
Sorry, the pool. But we've still taken advantage of those opportunities that we've had with them that we wouldn't have if we went with, like, the Hartford or whoever, which I think is an intangible that you have to look at, too. It's not just a price thing. There's other things that we get out of it. Because the training that we would have to provide would be an extra cost that we get through the pool.
I don't think there's any harm in, you know, occasionally going out and taking a look and making that comparison. To do that every year is really kind of a waste of resources, and in a way, it's kind of betting against yourself because you own this, you have a surplus position.
We had this year a substantial increase, and you talked about our property values going up. But is that, I mean, in your opinion, is that acceptable?
You know, I'm going to let Mike speak to that in a little more detail because the pool did have a rate increase this year, straight across the board on their property that really was the result of an increase in reinsurance costs. And those costs are increasing for all insurance companies, including your traditional for-profit carriers. We had a lot of natural disasters over the past year, and reinsurance carriers really kind of took a hit. So I'm going to have, Mike, if you wouldn't mind, step up and...
And I guess with that, too, I don't know if this question's best for you before you hop down or not, but your earthquake example brought to mind something. What backs up this fund? How solvent are they? Because like in the example of the earthquake, they're going to have all the way up and down this year front claiming, what backs up this insurance do they have, you know?
Let Mike deal with that, too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, thank you for having me here tonight, and I want to thank Ann for an excellent presentation. With her permission, I'm sure we'll be using parts of that for other presentations, so I'm not, I don't have any...
Mike, would you, yes, for the record, sit here.
Mike Rebeletti, Chief Operations Officer for Pool and PACT, but for purposes tonight, I'm representing the pool. So how would you, would you want me to answer the first questions and just, that would be fine with me, and I would just, I would like to address that. So the answer that we use, yes, we have accounted for that for very large instances. We go through a very extensive fiscal review every year with our actuaries, with our financial investors, and to make sure that we have substantial surplus in case of a very catastrophic event. So in this, in an earthquake instance, we have created a captive on top of our self-infunded pool, which is a pool, so which is called PRM, which is Public Risk Mutual, and that's our captive that's insulating us between the, to the reinsurers. So it helps save all of the entities a lot of money because we created the captive to be in that position between Lloyds of London, which is our main reinsurer for all of your catastrophic losses, and for the pool. So in a case of a very catastrophic event, the pool would be on the hook for $200,000. The captive would be on the hook for $300,000, and then the rest goes to Lloyds of London. So that's why we have such large limits, and that's how we, and that's the reason, the main reason for the increases this year is directly related to the increase that the Lloyds of London assessed to us, which was over 12.5% for the entire process. We were, actually, we're very fortunate that Lloyds of London, because, well, let me go back a little bit. Lloyds of London and the rest of the insurance industry has really taken massive hits just in the past two years. And they refer to the HIM events, which is the three big hurricanes that hit the southeast, plus the fires that hit the Santa Rosa area. You know, it all affects the reinsurance market. And many of the entities that these same reinsurers insure over the course have been allocating 25 to 40% increases. Fortunately, with our long-term relationship with Lloyds, they gave us a 12.5% increase. But we've been very fortunate with them over the past six years, so, and they did not give us any increases for five years, even though they were suffering some other major losses. So hopefully that gives you a little perspective on the property reinsurance market. And again, that's, the rate increase for that is directly related to the increase that we received from that reinsurer. And I'll touch on that in a little bit as I progress. So for the liability insurance, since Ann was referring to the different aspects of all of the different insurance coverages, you have, for the main reinsurer that we have for the school districts is United Educators. I'm a big fan of United Educators, and I know Ann really likes United Educators, but United Educators is a national reinsurer, and they're essentially a national pool that was generated by universities many decades ago. They're about the same age as the pool, which is about 30 years. We celebrated our 30th year last year. So the United Educators was kind of born out of the same insurance crisis that happened in the late 1980s. And they... And they now offer a portion of coverages to very large K through 12 school districts, and we're one of the few pools that we're able to get into, United Educators, to help provide this liability coverages for school districts. And that's very key. And we can provide more information, I'd love to come back and give you more information on all of that. One thing I have learned about being in this side of the insurance business is I was on your side for almost 20, 25-plus years as on the board member of the pool, but for the County of Eureka. So, I have that perspective, and I totally understand your decision-making on that side of the board. But if you want a conversation killer on airplane, and you want to have a lot of sleep, you just start talking about reinsurance and insurance, it's a done deal. It happened almost every time. So, with that being said, I just wanted to say that about the United Educators, because that's one aspect that we've had, that's there just for the school districts. And they're an excellent provider, and they have wonderful risk management products that we take advantage of. Also, one thing before I move on from the rates, if I answer all of these questions, we do have a, we did a spreadsheet just for the schools, every school district, and just for your perspective, we have 15 of the 17 school districts in our pool. So, your pool together with those other 15 districts, but we do accumulate, you know, the entire pool of all of our district, all of the local governments that we have insured. So, on a six-year basis, and even with your, you know, counting and factoring your total insured values, have they increased because you're adding buildings, which is wonderful, and, you know, building and improving your school districts, for a six-year basis, your insurance premiums have an average of about a 5.5% increase per year on average. So, this, of course, this year is a spike, but hopefully, and we're going to do everything we can to make that just a kind of a one-year spike. So, to give you a long-term history, we could do an analysis for the entire 16 years that you, if you ever want to. And along those lines of competition, I really like to see the comparison. Douglas County, which is obviously a very large county, they went out to bid in quotes two years ago, I believe, and we were very pleased that we were very competitive when they, when they got those rates. The one thing that's very unique about the pool, when you go out and quote, is like comparing apples to apples, because we have everything, and we have such large amounts of coverages that we've been accumulating over years and years. When you go out to quote, you have to go quote almost all of the individual policies and coverages, and then you have to decide. In fact, it was really pleasing this year, we actually had the City of Las Vegas interested in joining the pool, which is a whole big game changer, but they, and the reason why, because they have to do that in that manner. They have to go get all the coverages from maybe 10 different carriers, or 12 different carriers, and then piece it together. So, we piece it together for everybody and give you the package. So, just for perspective and on what we do on your behalf. You were speaking about NASB before. I'm a big fan of school districts. I was on a school board for a couple of years in Eureka County. And NASB, we sponsor, we helped co-sponsor NASB's safety training in April, and we're more than happy to do that again when you have us topic. And that's one point I want to make that's very unique about the pool, is you, through your board members, through your representatives, actually have a say-so in what your form's going to look like, and what your policies are going to actually list and represent. So, we have a strategic retreat in Lake Tahoe in September 20th and 21st, and we have a national speaker by name, his name is Daniel Bruce, he's a futurist, and he's also a strategic planner. He's going to be our keynote speaker. But this retreat is very key, and I hope that you have two or three representatives there to, because we're going to be talking about future planning for our policies and strategic planning for the pool, which could, in fact, decide on your different, how we use surplus to maybe subsidize a premium rate increase. It could be, we'll be planning on whether, what kind of new policies or what kind of risk management products we want to give out. So, those are the type of things that we're going to be talking about, and I'd really encourage participation, because that is a possibility for stabilization. And a lot of the stuff, even the surplus you're talking, that we do have, and how we manage our money, actually does subsidize the policies and the premiums that are assessed every year. So, with that being said, I know we've had your attention for quite a while. Do you have any other specific questions?
I would just like to reiterate that you guys were a great sponsor for our school safety workshop here in Carson City, and sponsoring Teresa Campbell was the scariest thing I've ever heard. She was a cyber expert, so that kind of leads me into, since you guys have heard of her and know all that, do you feel comfortable with the coverage that we have with our cyber?
Thank you for asking that, because that was one thing I want to add. We did increase the cyber coverage from $2 million to, what, $3 million? And we're talking about reinsurers, our other, one of our other reinsurers is called County CRL, County Reinsurance Limited. One thing about the insurance business is you have a lot of acronyms, you can keep them, keeping them straight is really interesting. So, but, yeah, we did increase that coverage, and we have a $500,000 coverage for privacy response if there is an incident. And we're also, you, your district actually took advantage of our passive cyber assessment product, and that was, you were the first school district to participate, and that was about a $35,000 value, and we're sponsoring that for all of our members at this point. And we're financing that through our captive with interest earnings on that. So, the answer is yes, you have excellent coverage. We changed the form specifically this last year in the middle part of the year, so all entities were covered in case you were affected or you're a victim of ransomware. So, I really pushed on that, and we, and that's the other thing about being kind of unique, being in the pool, we actually changed the form in the middle of the coverage year, because I was very worried, and I was not going to go to members and saying, oh, you're not covered for ransomware, but you are, and we want to make sure we keep that. So, hopefully, that answered that question. So, I know your time's important, and I don't want to stay too long.
Okay, this is an action I had, but Ann, you want to come back up here on the, you know what, you proposed on the, not proposed, but presented on the deductible. I mean, this would affect whatever we vote on, so what is it that you're suggesting?
Staff's recommendation is option number two for the $50,000 deductible.
I just have a comment about that. I would have liked to have had information in the packet about these options, and then there's a slide that was back previous that had little tiny orange dots on it that showed, they're really hard to see. And so, I'm seeing a lot of, you know, right there between 2016, 2017, it looks like there's four that are under the $50,000. Now, with the deductible, does that mean any property loss that is under $50,000, we pay it all? And we pay it multiple times, right? Unless the property loss gets over, it's not like an, there's a limit on out-of-pocket expense like health insurance, where if you, you pay everything on your own until you hit it to a certain point. If there's four losses that are $45,000, we pay all of them.
That is correct.
Okay, that's concerning to me with doing the $50,000 deductible, that we seem to have quite a few losses just under $50,000, and I'm concerned, because later on in the agenda, we have an agenda item where we're looking at slip, stepping into our contingency fund, so I'm worried about take, it's $28,000 difference.
Right.
So, it's one, one event, basically, for the 20, you know, would be, I'm a little concerned about that. And then, I guess, another question I had is, last board meeting, when we were talking about the contingency, Mr. Stokes mentioned that if a windstorm comes and blows our roof off, I would assume that roof destruction that way is covered by this? Okay, so, that should be, but if we end up having just under $50,000 multiple times, that could be a concern.
We have always had a $2,500 deductible for auto PD, that's auto property damage, and many of these smaller losses that you see here in the eight, nine, four, you know, range are actually auto losses. So, those deductibles, you would still have a $2,500 deductible on them. The property losses that, you know, you really want to look at are the larger losses. That loss that we had in '14 that was over $245,000, that $22,000 loss was an electrical fire in a panel, that $46,000 loss was a freeze loss, and the loss down here at the bottom for $39,000 is a current and open property claim right now, that we will most likely subrogate and recover all of that. So, sometimes property losses can go on for a few years, and then sometimes we recover part of that, if there are other parties at fault, too. But that just kind of gives you an idea of how much you're already assuming, and under the $25,000 deductible, you are assuming almost all of the, all of the loss already. So, you're not really taking any, you know, much more if we, if we were to model this based on six years of loss history. Anything can happen, but you could take that $50,000 deductible, and Mr. Fueiling could fund a deductible loss fund and park it, and if it doesn't get used one year, then it's just building and-
Well, okay, yeah, it would have been nice to have this information just before, you know, but AJ, does this all make sense to you, $50,000 deductible?
I can understand Trustee Crossman's concern, but in the, in the scheme of, you know, insurance is all about kind of these actuarial studies and looking at trends over long periods of time, and I would say it does make sense to me that if you're looking over this time experience based upon the history of events, that, you know, there obviously is a likelihood, you could have kind of what Trustee Crossman pointed out, but on average, it's not likely based on our history. So, in that sense, saving some money along those lines would be okay with me.
I would have liked to have had the information in your packets. I received the information from our insurance agent about three weeks ago, and because of his injury, I didn't really have an opportunity to discuss it with him, and I asked Mr. Rubleetti to prepare a deductible option for us two days ago, and he pulled it together, so.
Say it again. Yeah. What would be the amount?
Does our agenda item also, unless I missed part of this, did we discuss the self-insurance bond amount and the workers' compensation policy?
Yes, we would be seeking approval of those items as well.
Did you cover that, or did I miss?
No, I did not cover that. We don't typically, it's an excess work comp policy that we're required to purchase statutorily, and we're required to purchase the self-insured bond as well.
And this would be just for one year, right? If we tried the $50,000, we could always go back next year? Not an issue? So, it's a pleasure of the board.
I'll move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve as submitted the proposed renewal of property causality insurance package with Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool in an amount not to exceed, so, $564,451.41. Self-insurance bond in the amount of $3,220, and excess workers' compensation policy with State National Insurance Company in the amount of $44,063 for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Second?
Ryan, I'll second.
Okay, Ryan, second.
So, now we have discussion, right?
Yeah, we have discussion.
So, I guess my question is, is it worth saving the $28,000 there when we could get hit with two or three that are over the $25,000 limit? I know, I know, it's a tough question, but I guess that's my conundrum right now.
That is the risk you're taking, literally. That is the risk that you're assuming. But based on your loss experience, looking at six years' worth of losses here, we have 13 property losses over six years, and you can see that you had two that were over your $25,000 deductible.
Just an observation, we, for $560,000, we could have darn near just self-insured it, although that doesn't really help if we have a giant event, but it's a lot.
I mean, we have a lot of training that comes through that. I mean, there are additional perks that, I mean, that if you work in the schools, you would deal with regularly.
And your total combined premium here is not just for your property losses, that's also your liability losses, which we're not looking at here, because they haven't really impacted the cost of your program. But we have had liability losses, and if you'd like for me to come back at some point and present that information, we can look at that as well.
I'm seeing three that were over the $25,000, the 245, the 46, and the 39?
Correct.
Okay, not two, okay, so three of them. I have two kids with congenital glaucoma, so, you know, I've seen lightning strike twice, and I tend to prefer lower deductibles, just because I've been hit with medical expenses in excess of higher deductibles that haven't worked out. But that's, I understand property is something different, but I still get cautious of that, because-
Mike, I've sat kind of quiet, but I tend to be, I kind of tend to err that way, too, for $28,000, you know, I kind of feel like it's, you know, we know it's $28,000. If, you know, I'm looking at like a roof repair, things like that, it's, you know, one roof repair probably can hit us for more than that on a bigger school campus. So, I can see both sides of it, but I'm, you know, I think I would prefer the $25,000, is what I'm saying.
Am I right in thinking, if we had one event, we make money on the savings, if we have two, we lose? And obviously, these 13 were over multiple years, right?
Well, it depends on the amount of the event. If they're two, yeah.
Any comments from the audience? Seeing none. Renee, would you call a roll on this one?
Trustee Green?
Yes.
Trustee Crossman?
Yeah.
Trustee Karini?
No.
Trustee Cassiope?
No.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie?
No.
Trustee Swirzick?
Yes.
Excuse me, you have four no's and three yes. Excuse me, you have four no's and three yes.
Well, then we'll entertain a motion for, I mean, a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve as submitted the proposed renewal of property casualty insurance package with Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool in the amount not to exceed $592,304.36. Self-insurance bond in the amount of $3,220 and excess workman's comp policy with the State National Insurance Company in the amount of $44,063 for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And again, discussion on the motion, okay?
Yeah, I'll make that, oh, go ahead, I'll go after you. No, go ahead. I, I just wanted to say as, as far as this goes, I appreciate all the work Ann does. Ann always is very thoughtful, and I think her, her recommendations are always intelligent. I just, I, I kind of follow trustee Crossman, just my own personal experience on health insurance and things like that. The lower deductibles have kind of helped me out in the past. And so it's, it's kind of a roll of the dice, and it's not a reflection on Poole or reflection on Ann. I think, I'm very happy with our association with Poole, and I think they've been a good partner for us. And I think, you know, I've said it all many a times, I think we're, we're very lucky to have Ann, you know, coming in front of us and helping us out with a lot of these decisions.
Thank you very much. We're happy to implement whatever the pleasure of the board is. We can always look at other deductibles again next year and, and make these comparisons and give you a little more time to look at them too.
Comments from the audience? Seeing none. I'll, I'll just make one, one comment. I thought the, the NASB Safety Conference that was put on by, by, is it the Poole or Poole Pack in that case? Whatever, it was both. No, but it was, it was really a very sobering, and we're going to be following up as a district on that, on that conference. So that, that was a plus. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
Informational update on the Academic Parent Teacher Teams, APTT, in the Carson City School District. Sue and Carrie.
Hi. I want to thank Ann as well because I can honestly say Ann does not have the most fun job. And so, but I do, and you've heard me say that before. So, oh, sorry, Carrie Pryor, and my title is Professional Learning and Family Engagement Coordinator. And tonight, we're addressing the Family Engagement Coordinator piece, which was new this year to me. And I wanted to start off by thanking Mrs. Kima and Mrs. Dockry, who happens to be in the audience, and Nate, who is also in the audience this evening, and then Dr. Austin, who's not here with us. But last year, a year ago, we started looking at parent engagement in our school district and what we might do to strengthen parent engagement and really focus on academics and learning and partnering with parents around academics and learning. And so we began to study APTT, or Academic Parent Teacher Teams. And the county to the north of us, Washoe, they have piloted APTT in, in seven buildings for three years. And so last summer, we took a tour up to Washoe County to visit with them to see what they were noticing. And we decided that they had seen enough success that we wanted to pilot APTT in our district. And so as you know, Mrs. Dockry is an amazing grant writer, and, and she found money. I never ask her where she finds it, but she always finds me money. And so I also want to thank Jessica Greener and Sam, who also work at, yes, who also work at PDC. If you haven't had a chance to come over to the Professional Development Center, Jessica and Sam are the ones that would welcome you there. And they are amazing, and they partnered with me as well. We had, whoops. There we go. We had 29 teachers piloting. We had originally had 35, and six of the teachers had dropped out due to other commitments. But 29 teachers piloted for us. It consisted of two meetings this year, March and May. And in your packet, you have all the data that was collected. And so you'll notice that in your packet, and we'll go over a few of those pieces of data, you have parent surveys from March, you have teacher surveys from March, as well as from May, and then you also have fifth grade student surveys from May because they participate with their parents. We started off the year with a two-day training by Sarah Martinez. She's our WestEd consultant who comes and trains the teachers. And so they were trained in January. And some of the big takeaways from that day, and what WestEd believes and why I think their program is so powerful, is that, and I'm just going to read it here from my notes, is that what we want as, as a district and as sites and as teachers is we need to understand that families want their children to be successful. And I think just hearing her say that again to the teachers in the room, it just reminded me that, that we need to remember that, that, you know, no matter what's going on with our families or what we might see, that they're not taking an active role, they truly do want their children to be successful. We need to understand that the classroom teacher is the only direct link families have to the right information, skills, and resources they need to support their children. And that just keeps coming back over and over again, that reminder that it really is the classroom teacher. And study after study shows that the number one impact on student success is our classroom teacher. And we need to remember that the classroom teacher is that direct link. We need to be proactive about sharing actionable student assessment data. And by actionable, that means that's something that our parents can actually impact. And so we want to make sure, and through APTT, that we target skills that parents understand, and then, then we send home activities that target those skills. And we want to reach out to all families in the classroom personally and consistently to create and maintain two-way communication. And that one really stood out for me because under the Teacher Evaluation System, NEPF, under Professional Roles and Responsibilities, the box under Parent Engagement, the very top box is about two-way reciprocal communication. And APTT really does believe in that. And you'll see a data point in your packet as well that we asked the parents how important it was that they had been personally invited by the teachers. So we're going to get into some of that data. In March, which was the regular elementary parent-teacher conferences that, that occur in March, they'll occur again this year, we had 74% attendance of the 29 classrooms that piloted. And then in May, you're going to notice a dip. We also went down one teacher to 28, our resource teacher, our special education teacher. He did not pilot in the May. It seemed to confuse parents a little bit about why they were going to a parent-teacher conference, why they had IEPs for their students who were on IEPs, as well as attending this APTT. But we're going to talk a little bit about that dip in attendance, but our WestEd consultant actually praised us on that. Because you have to think, that was May 20th and 21st. It's the end of the year, a very random during-the-day-or-evening event that a whole school isn't putting on. It actually was very well attended. And we were able to pull some longitudinal data from WestEd, and we actually had one of the higher rates. So we're going to take just a quick look at, at some of the data. If you pull out, I'm not sure the order in which Renee had put it in your packet, but at the top of this parent survey, May 2018, I kind of want to take a look at that. It's, the header says, "Parent Survey, May 2018." So you can see the distribution of the top graph there is which school does your child attend. And so the largest number of teachers that piloted were at Bordowick Bray, one of our Title I schools. They had nine teachers that actually piloted. And so the data that's represented, 30% of the parents that are sharing their comments were from Bordowick. And then you'll see Fremont was second, as well as Mark Twain, and they both had six teachers piloting. But every building is represented. Fritsch had two teachers that were piloting this year. Seliger had three, and Fremont had, oops, I already said that one, six. Empire had two as well. But the next one really stood out for me because the teachers sent home invitations, as well as many of them made personal phone calls using their prep time. And that really showed up in the data. So for 30, or, I'm sorry, for 92% of the parents, they either strongly agreed or agreed that receiving that personal invite, and I had the opportunity to attend every piloting teacher's APTT over the, the two days, and most of them, I got to see both. And I had conversation with the parents. And the majority that I talked to, I said, "What brought you in?" And they either told me that our child told us how important it was to come to APTT, or it was receiving that personal invite. And so I think that that's something that we really need to remember, is that we need to be inviting our parents in. And I'm not really sure how to allow teachers time to do that because they have so much on their plates, but I'm really seeking out that answer. And I'm going to think about that and ask teachers, you know, "How can we free you up to make those phone calls? What might we do?" Because it really is important that the parents feel that relationship with the teacher. I know trustee Cassioppo's wife was one of the piloting teachers for me, and Michelle had the highest return. She had the highest attendance. Now, she did do a day APTT in May and an evening, but you could see by attending her classroom, and I think Stacy, you were in there as well, the relationship that Michelle has with her parents is unbelievable. And I think that, again, that's just a piece of qualitative data, but it's something that you can see in the way that, that they interact with parents, teachers.
And she even had a thank you gift for them, for coming. I mean, it was pretty incredible, the time that your wife must have spent, or maybe you putting those on the water bottle, not sure who did them, but was pretty impressive, and it showed.
I paid for some of it.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for funding public education. So that leads me to, I really want to personally thank all of the teachers who piloted for us. It was a sacrifice this year to be part of the piloting team. They were subbed out a total of, of three half-days and two full-days. And they did a lot of prepping at home. They, Mrs. Dockry's team purchased all of the materials that went home for the activities, but we can't purchase any food or drink through that. And so like Mr. Cassioppo said, Michelle had water bottles with a cute little logo on there thanking them for coming. And so things like that, we can't purchase, but teachers are always purchasing that. So you have a list in your packet of all the teachers that, that piloted. So if you get a chance to run into any of those teachers. I also want to thank the principals. They were very supportive of the pilot and gave up two hours each to meet as leadership teams to debrief the data and to talk with Sarah from WestEd. So, all right, moving on. So you have two packets full of data from the teachers and their thoughts. I love that the teachers were very honest about sharing some of the reflection about it. Here's one quote that came out of, from that packet, but you can look at both March and May and see their responses. I did want to share with you one piece to highlight out of the teacher's packet that is labeled Teacher Survey, May 2018. I think something that our district does really well, or at least I'd like to believe that we do this well, as the Professional Learning Coordinator, one of the pieces that Mrs. Dockry and Mrs. Kima honored was that we were going to provide professional learning around the APTT. It is, it is a program that you purchase so that once they don't support us anymore, we own all the rights to APTT. And so we would continue that, and that's how you sustain it. But if you look at that top graph, this, this actually made me very excited, that all of the teachers who participated, so 100% either marked it a four, which would be strongly agree, or a three, agree, that they received appropriate initial professional development to support that implementation. And that was very important to me. Sarah Martinez from WestEd, she answers emails, she answers phone calls, she's there the morning of, helping get PowerPoints ready, she's embedding data for the teachers, but also just providing that work time and that support. So that was super important to me. The other thing that I would just like to point out too is in that packet as well, we had 84% of the piloting teachers would support another pilot, because that slide's coming up, what's coming up next? Whoops, I clicked on that, a little bit too much there. And then we have 76% from who piloted this year will be piloting again next year. And of the six that aren't piloting next year, one of them is our resource teacher who already didn't pilot the second time. We have one moving out of state. We have one taking over a mentorship. You met, you met Sarah Ruiz, and she wants to focus on her nine new hires rather than APTT. And then a few didn't think it was a fit for them. But 76% will be continuing. So, the parent survey, I enjoyed, I enjoyed just getting to see some of the parents. I mean, it was just really delightful and to visit with some of the parents. But I, there's a bunch of highlights in there, but I do want to pull out one of the concerns. And we, we talked a lot about this, Mrs. Kima and I talked about this, and it was the parent feedback from March. If you take a look at that, there's a concern in there, and I think we're doing somewhat of a disservice. And so this is the other part that I want to study. The question was, or the statement was, "I know how to help my child succeed in school." And 21% of our families who took the survey said that they were either unsure, disagreed, or strongly disagreed with that. And that was alarming to me, that 21% of our families are not sure how to support their students. And in talking with especially the fifth-grade parents, they're very unsure. And they were doing math in one of the classes, and the parents were like, "This isn't how we learned math." They're very, very uncertain. And then in one of the other fifth-grade classrooms, it was around writing, and many of the parents said, "Oh, I was a horrible writer," you know? And so it's like, this is the piece that stood out for me. And I know I should probably focus on, okay, it's great that 77 or 78%, well, I guess if you do the math, 79, there you go, I can do mental math, actually feel comfortable, but really, that's 21%. So if you think of the number of families that we have in our district, that's a very large number. So I'm going to tie that together with what happened in May. So if you look at your May survey from the parents again, which is this really colorful one, if you turn to, it must be page four in your, well, one to the back of page two, "The activities demonstrated by the teachers helped me understand how to help my child at home." And that's our goal, right? That we give them an actionable data piece and a targeted skill, and then we provide activities that they will understand to support their learner at home. And 96% of our parents either agreed or strongly agreed with that. And that was, that's what we want, right? That they're understanding those. And then the next one is, "APTT meetings helped me feel more confident with helping my child at home," and 92%. So for me, that's the connection, right? That we want to, we understand that they may be uncomfortable, and so we need to find out what they're uncomfortable with and then support them. So there was some shift in their thinking between May and, or between March and May. The fifth-grade students that piloted, we have two classrooms, one at Bordowick and one at Mark Twain, the fifth graders stay in with the teacher. So the fifth graders see their data, the fifth graders go over their data with the parents, they play the games or the skills with the parents. I had the opportunity to go interview the fifth graders, and their data is in your packet as well, under Student Data. They are delightful, and I will say it again and again and again, the students in Carson City School District are amazing. We have such great students. Two things under their data, but number one, what did you like about participating? One of the students said, "I like, what I like is that Mrs. Loughlin explained math and reading really well, and my mom understood it really well." And I just thought, "That was so funny." And so many kids said that. "The way Ms. Loughlin explains it, now my mom gets it." And I'm like, "Okay, but do you get it? Because you're the one taking the ass back, so we have to figure that out." And then she, she continues, "Also, my mom has been asking a lot about the APTT meetings, so that was good." Under number two, what information was most helpful to you as a student? was most helpful to you as a student? One student said, the most helpful information was that most of our time is spent away from school. One of the pieces that we share with parents is a pie chart about where students really spend their hours and it's shocking because they really are not in school that much when you think about it. They're at home the majority. And so this student says, so even during the summer, I need to practice reading and math. And then lastly, this little boy, when I interviewed him, I had met him twice in Ms. Loughlin's class and he was just delightful and adorable and he was just very thoughtful. But he said, well, to paraphrase what he said, but anyway, it was really cute. He said, basically, I think this can make the whole child even better because you don't need to spend more of the teacher's time on every student's parents when you can just meet with them at one time. And I thought, you're right. Why are we wasting people's time? So he was delightful. But anyways, moving forward. So next steps. Because of the positivity and the success that we saw, we are going to pilot year two with an additional thirty teachers. So I sent out, once we realized where we were going to be able to fund this, sent out an email and I already have twenty-one teachers willing to pilot. They have to come in two days over the summer to be trained. So it'll be August thirteenth and fourteenth. And so again, I think that speaks about the quality of staff that we have and the dedication on their part. And then we're going to actually run four meetings. We're going to run a full cycle of APTT the way it was intended. Meeting number one's going to be at the beginning of the year. It'll be a whole group meeting. Most likely, it'll be at back-to-school night. Meeting number two is the individual meeting, which happens during regular parent-teacher conferences. Meeting three will be whole group and that date will be decided. It's most likely going to be an early release day in January. And then they'll end with a whole group meeting in March, which is regularly scheduled because we noticed that the attendance was higher when they were already planned. So we're thinking back-to-school night, regular parent-teacher conferences. So with that, any questions?
Just one, it's not really a question, it's a comment unfortunately didn't get included in your presentation, which I think next time you'll remember, is at May, they get these folders with their kids and it showed their growth.
Yes.
And they're all numbered, so nobody knows who your kid is in the folder. And the growth that these kids had was tremendous. There's like, in the two classes that I went to, there were only two kids that hadn't grown. And one had only been there a week. So you really couldn't use that in the data, but it had to be used. But I think that was a piece that's really missing is that the students themselves, with all this extra time and effort that the parents and the teachers are putting in, you can actually see it in the testing. Or is that, is it the S-back testing that's on those, the growth?
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, Stacy. Thank you. Because I totally skipped over that part. And so I was so glad that you're here. So the teachers target a skill and it's up to them. And so some of the examples are fluency with facts, sight words, they target a map data point, comprehension and reading fractions. And so once they target that skill, then the teachers have a pre and a post-assessment and then the activities match that. But Stacy's right, the data around the growth, especially around sight words, fluency with facts, was amazing because parents felt like they could really target that. And they felt like it was something that was understandable to them. One of the teachers said in one of the last interviews that teachers don't spend a lot of time on those kind of level-one, DOK-one skills, kind of that memorizing, because we need to get them to, you know, that higher level to apply it. But boy, parents latch on to that, right? This is something we can do at home. And so thank you for bringing that up. They really did see a lot of growth.
And one of the teachers actually had been doing this growth thing for seven or eight years on her own. She'd been keeping this spreadsheet. And so she was really amazed at how much it grew because of this program. And that's one of the datas that you could actually see. So and she was just really impressed with how it worked and stuff. And that, I think says volumes too.
And I was just going to say, just along those same lines, I mean, we know, what do parents always ask about? Math, facts, and spelling lists in the beginning of the year. And that's because when we were going up through school, that's what we did. And so parents know that and are familiar. And so being able to have these opportunities to show them how those are incorporated into the curriculum, but that's not the curriculum. This is how you're kind of practicing. It's just a way that you can do this at home and really bolster these skills. But here's what we teach in school. And I think that that's what parents really hunger for because the number of times we get calls about math. And, you know, it's usually math, 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 math. And so I think that the more you get the parents in and feeling comfortable, that's huge.
And our amazing math coaches, I was able to meet with the STEM coaches, a couple of them this week, and they were, they're going to put together a fluency with fact assessment and some activities because from this data, we could see that as well, is that, you know, parents, like you said, with our background, we're used to those time tests and playing around the world and things like that. Well, now we call it fluency with fact. And it really is that, right? That you need to be quick and you need to have a strategy. And so they're going to be putting together some activities. So I really feel like it's becoming a district-wide effort.
And in that same realm though, I'm kind of nervous because it did take a lot of the teachers' time. And we have the read-by-three that's already taking that K through three times. So I want to be real aware that I realize that there is an extra time particle of this. And I don't want to get those teachers burnt out either. I mean, the growth was good and the experience was good, but I do worry about how much more we keep putting on teachers.
Well, I'm really hoping that I can work closer with Nate and the ELA coaches because many of the teachers could see the connection between ILPs and the goals that they set that could be the goal along with APTT. And so I think, again, we don't want to duplicate, right? We want to make sure that what we're doing for our staff is streamlining and making their jobs easier. And especially bringing those parents in as academic partners, why not, right? Because that can only support those read-by-three goals as well.
I would just reiterate that. I know, along with my wife, I had a chance to talk to several of the Boarderwick teachers and teachers from the other school. And really overwhelmingly, I got positive feedback about the APTT. They thought that, yes, it's additional work, but they really saw value in it and enjoyed it quite a bit. And thought it really, you know, even before seeing the results from some of these kids or as they were seeing it, they just felt this was, you know, really the right direction, the way we need to go on things. And to piggyback on what Stacy said, you know, that's the idea is picking out the stuff that's really working and that the teachers can wrap their heads around and say, okay, if we can find a way to do this and cut out, you know, the stuff that's either duplication or not working as well and focus on this kind of stuff, I think we're going to get the support we need on these programs that really are showing good results.
Yeah. And I think it's only going to be strengthened. And you will see comments in the teachers in the May one, a concern about funding for resources. And we met with the principals and they're going to be funding some of the resources through their principal funds. Valerie, again, amazing, works the Title I budget like nobody's business. And we're going to be funding Title I schools through that. But really working with the teachers to try to find time in their regular workday, which would be PLCs. And so we have grade levels that are going to start piloting. And so hopefully, some of that work can be done in their professional learning communities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for, I've got a couple of questions here.
Okay.
You're going to this, another pilot. Given the results, when will it become part of the everyday operations of the school?
Well, we would anticipate that if it's as successful and if the fifty-five teachers that we're looking at that would be part of the second year, thirty new and twenty-five remaining on, they really will be the voice for the teachers, then we would say like in year three. I had a phone conference with WestEd and our consultant and they've never done an entire district rollout at once. But Washoe has done seven schools. We just have six elementaries. But they think that we are brave doing it the way we're doing it in general. But, so I would anticipate that it will be just as successful and that we would hear the teacher's voice. And if they want to do it full district, we would go district-wide.
Well, I say this because, you know, we have a real opportunity here. We have a new hire to take over the, like the learner center model construction going into the elementary schools. But the connecting link, and I just go out and talk to the students, the learning guides that were in the race to the top connects teachers, students, and parents. And we have the opportunity at the elementary to make them whatever we want to make them, given what you said, parents want success. We have the tool, a foundational tool, to already do this. And this, with what you just explained and what these results are, we have a real opportunity to do something pretty special here for the kids. So, and the parents.
Yeah. And like you said, we want to provide parents with information that they can actually use. And so we're seeking that.
You have a tool of a learning guide that you can make it whatever it needs to be. And if it needs to be focused at the parents to be co-teachers, do it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I'm excited to see what they produce with those learning guides.
Both ways, because most teachers are finding ways to reach their parents. It's hard to reach some parents when they're working different shifts. And so having something built into the schedule when you could talk to Johnny's mom real quick and actually see what she looks like, that's huge. And so I think for most teachers, they're going to appreciate that time because we spend a lot of time chasing parents for signatures and to talk about this or that. So I think it's...
Well, it's about the relationship, right? And even bigger than the relationship with the teacher was that the other parents got to say, oh, you know, my son loves to play with your son Joe and, oh, it's so nice to meet you. And so it was a great way for parents to meet parents too. Any other questions?
Hey, we'll be anxious to keep us updated.
I, we will keep you updated. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on. And we'll go to agenda item number thirteen. Discussion and possible action to approve Aramark Education as the Carson City School District Nutrition Services Food Service Management Consultant from July one, two thousand eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, with the option to renew for one year at a cost to the district in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, with funding to come from the nutrition fund for possible action. AJ?
Thank you, President Zorizic. Andrew Feeling for the record. This evening, I come to you with a copy of a proposed contract with Aramark, who's our food service management company for the next school year. Aramark has been our food service management company since the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school year. So we are completing our eighth year with them. Based upon USDA guidelines, this contract each year, it can only be renewed for one year. Each year, it must be approved by the local state agency in charge of nutrition. So the Nevada Department of Education reviews this contract and they have now reviewed it. And it is the contract that is in your packets. The, I guess, just to, with this agreement first, it's a little, the type of contract we have is unique and that is called a cost-reimbursable contract. Many districts have what is called a fixed fee contract where you pay Aramark or you pay whatever your food service management company, be it Sedexo or Chartwells, based on a per meal rate. So for every breakfast they serve, every lunch they serve, you pay them a certain amount. We decided to go to, that is what we used to have. We went to a cost-reimbursable contract in this last RFP session to really be able to get a better sense of where money is being spent and where we're paying Aramark these fees. So while the fees that we pay them represent that fifty thousand, two seventy, there are many more costs to their service. So we're paying for all the food, the supplies that are being used in the cafeterias, and then Aramark's staff person that oversees our program. There are no large changes to the agreement. The biggest one is, or I guess the most notable is, the last two years, they have had a guarantee of not having a deficit of greater than basically two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They have now improved that down to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that is somewhat of a, I guess, a commitment to believing that they can improve what they are doing. I did include in the executive summary, the performance over what was audited two or a year ago and what I'm projecting now for this year. So I'd initially given you some, a better expectation. And that's why I wanted to put this in the executive summary because it is not turning out, based on numbers we had some months ago, kind of where I was hoping it was trending towards. So, but last year, in the nutrition fund, we had a deficit of about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So Aramark was on the hook to us for about sixty-eight hundred dollars then to meet their guarantee. This year, the deficit is looking closer to three hundred thousand dollars. So it's certainly disappointing that it's increased. But again, because of that guarantee that they put in place, they are on the hook to meet some balance of that amount. So as a, I guess, otherwise a review of the year, now that we have all our final numbers in, the number of total meals sold this year was down in total, I believe by about ten thousand altogether between all the breakfasts and the lunches that we serve. Breakfasts were up about two thousand. I think lunches were down about twelve thousand this year. So the breakfast program continues to grow. They've worked to expand our snack program, after-school snack program, working with the Boys and Girls Club during the summer and during summer school, providing food to students. But we are down on the lunch side for the second year in a row. So...
Do we know, AJ, I'm sorry, do we know why? Why are we down on the lunch side?
So the, the two kind of are, one thing that stands out in that they would bring up in discussing this is that we had a number of snow days this year. And so that impacts district-wide. I mean, they're, they're serving over a thousand lunches each day, you know? So that would be significant. The, I don't know if there's any other specific reason that stands out. There were some adjustments to Carson Middle School's lunch hour this year. They went from three to two lunches and that may have restricted some of their, their lunch count was down quite a bit at Carson Middle School this year. So that would have some impact. A number, I think of the, of the ten schools, I would have to look back for sure, but I think six of them were actually up on lunches this year. Amazingly, Empire was down where students can eat beer provision two school, which means every student eats for free for breakfast or lunch. And their numbers, their number of actual students is down this year from last year. But their number of lunches served was down, which kind of is surprising. But a good deal of that is probably due just to a reduced enrollment at Empire Elementary School.
And then you had mentioned you were going over the deficit summary, and I probably got the order wrong, but you talked about how the one year, they're, you know, they're on the hook for about sixty-eight hundred bucks. And then you said they were over, the deficit was about three hundred thousand. But you made it sound like there's some negotiation there? Or do we know what they're on the hook for?
So we don't know the final number. So we wait until after the audit is complete. So we actually have, here's the final difference. And then within the contract, there are exceptions. So for example, having snow days would be considered an exception where they could say, well, you know, based on the average number of lunches and breakfasts we serve, we couldn't serve that day. So therefore, you didn't bring in as much and as many meals. And so the items that are considered exceptions are usually pretty, I mean, they're reasonable. But then there's kind of negotiation on our side of saying, well, yeah, but, you know, our labor costs came in under what we expected. And so we kind of go back and forth on that. Last year, the sixty-eight hundred dollars, I didn't really offer any room to negotiate on that one because it was such a small amount. But I'm sure we'll go, I know we'll go through that process this year, but it's already something that I'm preparing for, items to kind of combat some of that. So...
AJ, on our early release dates, do we still serve lunch?
We do. Yeah, we do.
And, you know, going through Exhibit B, the food service budget, you know, the one big line item, the district labor of that $1,625,000, are we, have we looked at that? Are we, is it just the right staffing, or is that excessive?
Yeah, you know, we actually, we took a little, I don't believe we're excessive. We actually tried this year hiring an additional staff person at Carson Middle School. They tried to arrange some different areas where students would have access to food. And unfortunately, we had a hard time hiring positions for some of the year. And when we did have those positions staffed, for whatever reason, you know, they're using marketing materials and getting information out to students and trying to drum up interest. If I remember, they were rarely able to get more than 20 students during lunch period to go over to this north end of the building to access food. And, you know, one of the longstanding comments about Carson High is that the lines were, you know, too long, and so students wouldn't go there. So, there was an effort to try to change that up a little bit, but didn't exactly work out the way we had anticipated. So, staffing levels, they look at a statistic called Meals Per Labor Hour. So, they're always looking at, and actually, every month, we have our meetings, and we look at, based upon the number of meals being sold, the labor hours going into making that happen. We aren't overstaffed, really, by any means, as far as they're concerned. And Chris Cooper, our coordinator of Nutrition Services, you know, she, if anything, I think she would, she would like to try to have some more staff and try some more things, but there hasn't been. That was one, kind of a good shot, we thought, but otherwise, not a compelling reason to otherwise add staff at this point. And that number, too, so like this year, for labor, we should come in right around, it's at 1.575 million. So, there's probably a little bit of cushion in that number, but feel comfortable with that district labor number.
Did we bet it out? Did we bet it out to other companies, or?
So, the process, it's actually very regulated by the USDA. So, you have to go through a competitive RFP process. And so, in 2010-2011, when that happened, there's not a lot of players in this game. There's Aramark, Chartwells, Sedexo. Avian's is one that's big in the Midwest. There's one that's big in Arizona area called Southwest Foods. I think I'm leaving one out. But anyway, so you have to go through that process. And then, it's restricted where you can only stay with them for five years, and there's a one-year, there has to be a renewal each year, and it can be only for one year after that. So, then in 2015, we had to go back out to RFP again, and we had Chartwells and Southwest Foods that came to the RFP kind of final meetings. And through the point process, Aramark ended up as our food service management company again. They also are the food service management company for Washoe County Schools. Washoe County, prior to that, was with Sedexo, I think, for almost 30 years, and then they finally changed. Otherwise, around the state, the Chartwells has started taking a number of the smaller districts around the state. So, and they're very interested in us. They're always reaching out, and these folks are always kind of in touch and wondering what's happening with the district.
Well, and then, when we did the RFP, it was really close between Chartwells and Aramark, because we weren't real happy with Aramark the last five years that we had him. And the one turning point was the person that Aramark had in place. And then, he left six months after we did the contract. So, I think that's definitely something that we need to look at in this next, because it's coming up, right?
Yeah.
So, that's one of the things, because, well, and I'd like to see, I don't know, have we done surveys about the food? Because there was a definite difference between those two at that meeting.
So, they do, there's a high school survey that they have, that kids take online. I think it was actually taken during the school day in some of the health classes. And they, they, Aramark doesn't, they find that the results from elementary age surveys are not always so useful, because everybody just wants cotton candy for all their meals. But they did, they did do an elementary survey, but it was more, instead of it being a survey, they actually did a sit-down with kids from different ages and some leadership kids at some of the elementary schools. And so, I don't, I don't know that the information was that much better. You know, there's a lot of kind of just the wants, but there was an effort, there was an effort to do that. And also, and I don't mean to cut you off, the, one thing, just so you know, to the, there is a document, we're required to monitor this contract. And so, we have a quarterly evaluation that we go through with Aramark, on top of having monthly invoice meetings. So, one of the things I'm going to be requesting with NDA, I don't know if it'll be approved, but right now, we evaluate them four times a year. And that isn't a lot of time, kind of within a school year, for things to change much. So, I'd like to request to bring it down to three times, but then, we would do one evaluation in November, December timeframe, and then do another one in February, March. And we actually consider the February, March one we do now our annual. And the reason for that is because if we really would decide, you know, we need to go back out to RFP, we want that decision to be made earlier rather than later, because that's a rather lengthy process to go through. So, and then, we do another, right now, we do another one in April and another one in June, and like to just end up making the final one in June after that. So, but it is something we actively review and go over.
And then, they give a presentation to the committee every year at the end of the year.
Correct.
But that presentation wasn't made to this board this year?
Correct. It was to the RFP committee that originally chose.
But every year before that, it had been. So, is there a reason we didn't have it this year? Because we usually have a presentation by Aramark, don't we? Or is I'm confusing all the meetings I go to. It would be helpful.
I don't want to say you're confusing them.
Yeah.
I could find out.
But not this-
Yeah, we did a presentation back in December, January this last year. It was kind of a long one. Before that, I don't know if we had really done one. I could ask, Chris Cooper would most likely know. I really am not sure. But, yeah.
And then, the only other question they have, the agenda item says not to exceed $50,270, but you have a total subsidy budget of minus $230,000. So, I'm kind of, I don't understand the motion or the agenda item.
So, the guarantee itself is not the contract amount. So, the fact that they're saying, "We will guarantee your deficit not to be worse than negative $230,000," that's not, their contract and their costs are only a part of what's in here. So, the fees that they charge for their service are really what is that, that $50,000 number? That's really what, if you want to look at it, you know, what's Aramark's, you know, admin, you know, overhead and profit, it's that, it's that $50,270 number that they're, that are considered the admin and management fees within the contract. So, the, for example, at the end of the year, we pay Aramark a lot of money for food, but we do it on a cost-reimbursable basis where every month, Chris Cooper is sitting down with the Aramark rep. They're going through every single invoice and seeing, okay, how much is actually spent on food. And so, that could fluctuate dramatically depending on usage and that sort of thing, you know, how many, you know, all of a sudden, a bunch of kids start eating. So, to me, ultimately, that the most important point is that fee part, because that truly is, you know, we're not necessarily getting anything in return for that. That's like the charge for the service.
Do we, oh-
Go ahead. Still just trying to figure out where that number comes from. So, the Aramark labor on the budget that you have is $97,000.
Right. So, that would represent the costs, the-
Oh, so it's down here with the administrative fees and the management fees. So, that's different than their labor?
Correct.
Okay.
That's outside of that.
I think I just saw the number. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, sorry.
So, A.J., we, when we first, when we first went to an outside vendor, I mean, the whole purpose is that they're a big organization, they, you know, they have buying power and that kind of stuff. Do we track that to where, I mean, how do we know we're getting a better deal on lettuce from them versus buying it ourselves?
That's a really good question. So, one of the things that USDA requires and NDA has to enforce with us when they do our audits is, Aramark has to show that whatever credits they're getting because of their volume discounts, they have to clearly show that every month on their invoice. And interestingly, Nevada, we require them to apparently do more than they do in other states to show that, to their frustration. But it's something that we've kind of worked out with Nevada Department of Agriculture as far as what they need to show us. So, in any given month, the amount of volume discounts is somewhere between like $7,000 and $11,000 on food. So, from the standpoint of what we're seeing, is there a discount because of the volume of what they're purchasing? Yes, maybe it's there. Now, is that offset by paying some fees and things like that? Yeah. But on balance, it seems like it's to our benefit.
And just to talk from a historical thing, when we would sit down and have our tentative budget meetings before we had Aramark, we were taking $500,000 or $600,000 out of the general fund to do nutrition services. So, maybe it's not a volume thing, but there's a big difference by going with them and not going, doing it ourselves. And that's the biggest part. And then, we could save even more if they took over the staffing, which we are not, there's no interest in that from this side. So, that's just a historical perspective.
No, and I appreciate that. And that was just my question. It wasn't saying that, gee, I think we're not getting a good deal. I just want to-
Sure.
Make sure, you know, kind of make sure it is working out for us.
Yeah.
So, how's Chartwells? How they, they doing a good job for Washoe County?
No, they're, Aramark, they're-
They have Aramark.
Oh, they do have Aramark?
They have Aramark.
They have-
Aramark in Washoe, actually, I don't know how long they've been there, but I think la, is it, I think it was two years ago or last year was the first year. They actually have got it down to a break-even now. So, now, Washoe's a different piece. They actually have a gigantic central kitchen that makes all the meals for all their schools, and they send them out. So, it's a little bit of a different situation, although the employees there are still Washoe County School District employees. They have not gone that route. Talking with other districts, I mean, I think Chartwells has been in those districts for one or two years now. I think two years for some of them, maybe most of them. Maybe it's three at White Pine. Yeah. And some good and bad. You know, I, there's more research to be done, I think, when we get to that point. So-
And I'd be interested in seeing how that plays out in White Pine, because I was following one of the former board members there who was posting lunch trays from Chartwells, which are way more appetizing-looking than the lunch trays that I've seen at my kids' schools. So, at some point, when that comes up for reconsideration, that would be good to know how it's played out in White Pine. And just, I mean, I know food appearances isn't everything, but it is, it also is, too.
Yeah, White Pine and Elko have been very happy with Chartwells.
One of the things we talked about, sorry, one of the things we talked about last meeting, I thought, was we were talking about nutritional information and whatnot. And while I'm not saying write it into the contract necessarily, I would like to get, whether it's Aramark or down the road, somebody else, more information, easy-to-understand information about, you know, really, what is the nutritional value? Because to Trustee Crossman's point, if you walk through the schools, there's a couple of things that look like they might be healthy, but for the most part, even the salad, some of them are drenched in dressing, and I wouldn't exactly call it nutrition.
One thing, actually, and I, after the last meeting, I went back and, because we had our monthly meeting, I spoke with Katie Schartz, our Aramark rep. And I'd forgotten about, two years, two years ago, they started something called their school dish website. So, if you would go to the nutrition webpage, you'll see, I think it, I think there's like, it says school dish, and there's an apple. It kind of looks fancy. But if you click on that, any meal that's being served in a given day at any of our schools, it gives you all of the nutritional information on every single item that's being eaten. And part of that, I mean, part of it is nutritional concern, part of that is allergies and things like that, to be concerned about, a lot of parents are. So, there is something like that. You have to kind of find it to get there. So-
And I don't mind searching for it, but I think some things, it might be nice if it was easier to-
Sure.
You know, I mean, we are paying them a good amount of money. I think it'd be, you know, kind of like tonight, no offense, but I'm wondering why they're not here.
Yeah, that was my question, too.
And I, actually, I meant to start with that. So, I was, I had asked them to be here. They have a national training in Dallas that they were required to be at this evening. So, I, yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to start with that. So-
All right, this is an action item. Anybody want to, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, I'll do.
I move that the Carson School District Board of Trustees approve Aramark Education, Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve Aramark Education as the Nutrition Services Food Service Management Consultant for the Carson City School District from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, at a cost to the district in the amount not to exceed $50,270, or $50,270, with funding from the Nutrition Fund.
Second by Mr. Walker. Comments from the audience? Seeing them, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's go to agenda item number 14. Discussion and possible action to use portion of fiscal year 2018-19 budgeted contingency funds to pay and maintain certain staffing and program costs for the Read-By Grade III program in the district during the school year due to the loss of funding from the RBG III grant as authorized by NRS 354598005. This is for possible action. We've got Richard, A.J., Susan, Valerie, and Nate. All right, we're ready.
Susan Keema for the record. Part one of the Read-By Grade III agenda item was introduced at the June 12 Board of Trustees meeting. During that meeting, the following elements were covered: the review of the law, results of the Read-By Three grant process, and potential options for the board to consider to support Read-By Grade III due to the district not receiving any competitive grant funds for 2018-19. As a result, you as a board had a Read-By Three reading data request, and the district office, along with you, had questions about NDE's grant selection process. During tonight's presentation, Mr. Nathan Brigham, Lead English Language Arts Implementation Specialist, will share with you measures of academic progress, which is MAP data for K3 students. Mrs. Valerie Dockery, Grants and Special Project Director, will provide an update to questions the district had around the Nevada Department of Ed's decision-making process. We will also be able to provide information on other grant results to the board. I do, I must caution you, though, we did receive this information verbally today, just today. So, while some, there are some parts we're very confident of, there's other parts we're still flushing out, some of the other pieces. So, I may suggest that there could be a Part III to this Read-By Three item July 10, if the board so chooses to wait for some additional information. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nathan Brigham to start off with our MAP data for Read-By Three.
Good evening, Nathan Brigham for the record. So, in your board packet, there should be two pages, their numbers and percentages. That way, you have both of them. They are color-coded to match what is in the presentation. And in the presentation, I'm just going to be going over Kinder district-wide, first, second, and third district-wide, because that's how it's reported to the state. It really shows you the larger numbers- how it's reported to the state. It really shows you the larger numbers, but in your packet, you have it broken down by grade level, and you also have it broken down by school site, so that if you want to take a closer look at those numbers, you have it in your packet, again, numbers and percentages. So I'm going to go quickly over this slide, and the reason I'm going to go quickly over it is, what we're really looking for tonight is, are the Read-By Grade III services that we provided this year effective, and do we want to allocate money for it? This data is not the best reflection of whether our Read-By Grade III services were effective this year, and I'll explain why. Last year, when we reported our numbers for Read-By Grade III students that were identified as deficient in the fall, we tracked them again in the winter, we tracked them again in the spring, and we came up with a percent of reduction of deficient students. Last year, we had an 11.6% reduction, which was a very good reduction. We went to the state board, we presented there. In the winter and the spring, we did not add students to the list that tested deficient at those points if they had not tested deficient in the fall. At the beginning of last year, that was our understanding of how to report data. This year, the way that data has been reported is, at any point, if a student is deficient, they're put on that list, regardless of if they were on in the fall, or the winter, or the spring. And so when you look at this, again, remember that Kinder does not test at the beginning of the year, they don't test until winter. So they had 45% deficient in the spring, 39%. So we had a pretty decent reduction in Kinder, there was a good reduction in first grade. Second grade, there was an issue. Based on NWEA's guidance from the previous year, students that were going to score below 198 in second grade, they suggested taking the K through 2 assessment, because it focused more on phonological skills and would give you better information to build reading foundations with those students. So we followed that guidance, and were one of the first districts to start testing for MAP. NWEA, there was a lack of communication that all second grade students had to take the 2 through 5 assessment, which really focused on the reading standards in second grade, and for your average second grade student was a harder assessment. And so when we took it in the fall, almost every single one of our schools took the K through 2 assessment, because that was what we had been kind of given guidance to do. In the winter and then in the spring, those students took the 2 through 5, which was the state mandated. And so you see that we started at 31.5 and then had a big jump. It's because most of them took a harder assessment. And so that 31.52 was probably higher than that. Based on the feedback we got, it was suggested to not reassess them again on the 2 through 5 at the beginning of the year, because reassessing so close together at the beginning of the year was not going to give you valid data. Our third grade had a reduction of 4.84, which district-wide gave us a .17 reduction. I know that does not sound good, but there's two things to take into account here. And the first one, I really kind of covered already, or the second one, our second grade took a different assessment in the fall than they did in the winter and the spring, which bumped their numbers up, which then bumped, I mean, if you were to take second out of this, we're around a 6% reduction this way. The other thing is Carson City has a very high trans latency rate, and that takes effect the way that we reported data to the state. I had Gina run some numbers for me today, and we had 134 students just in grades K through 3 that enrolled after January 1st, which would be after our winter MAP assessment. So they weren't even part of our system in the fall, in the winter, and then if they show up two days before our spring MAP assessment and score below the 40th percentile, they count against us. And so it's different than, say, S-Back, where there is a cut date, that you have to be here before that date to count. If they are deficient at any point, they count against us. That does not always give us an accurate picture then of, do these services that we provided to students actually have an impact?
Is there a way looking at this going forward? So next year, maybe you run a report for the kids who have been here all year, and then these are the latecomers? Is that okay?
So basically, this is what our next slide covers. This slide compares data the same way that we did it last year, only students that were here in the fall. So if you look, our fall numbers are going to be identical on both slides. Our winter numbers are where we only included kids that were here in the fall, that were identified in the fall, and that actually received Read-By Grade III services. And I apologize, the purple is a little darker up here than it was on the computer screen, but in the spring, you can see that district total, we went from 38 to 25%, and we had an average reduction of 13.07. So we had a higher reduction this year than we did last year. We actually received our funds a little bit later this year also. And a lot of that is due to the fact that we put a lot of things in place last year, that we continued, we really didn't change a lot this year. Our teachers had familiarity with it, they knew what to expect, they knew the procedures, and because we had had such good success last year, they really had a lot of buy-in, even though, as Carrie pointed out earlier, with the extra time for teachers, that ILP part, the individual literacy plans, they take a long time. And the first year, it was a task that the teachers did, until we saw the data at the end of the year. They saw the impact of it, and this year, we were able to hit the ground running. Even though our Kinder didn't test until the winter, a lot of our Kinder teachers, based on what they could see, they were putting informal ILPs in place for their kids right away at the beginning of the year, because they knew how important it was, they knew what the process was, so they were starting to put it in place right away. So the big thing that I want this data to show, these students received services, and we had a 13% reduction. And I think that's really the data that you want to look at if you're deciding, these are the interventions that we had, were they effective or not?
I think it's really important when we're looking at data with, these are young children, and some of this data is skewed by computer skills or lack of understanding of the importance of these tests. And so there are fluctuations, and there's days those kids come in without breakfast, and it takes all you have to get them to sit up at the computer for an hour. So I mean, I think that what we have to look at is, this is one measure, and if we sat down with these classroom teachers, they could give us a true assessment of each one of their kids' reading abilities. And so, I mean, data is just data, and it's a benchmark, it's something we have to look at. But I think that we also have to keep in mind that we're dealing with young children, and we're doing the right thing to teach them literacy, which is an up and down process for many years. And I think that we have to make sure our staff knows that we understand that, we value the work they're doing.
And I completely agree with you. And while the ILPs do take a lot of time, I think they're one of the big benefits of Read-By Three, is we've always had this MAP data, we've always been able to see where students fell, the 10th percentile, the 50th, the 90th. But what did we do with it? And now we have a form. If they are below the 40th, they fill out the form. And while their data may fluctuate, because you may have a student deficient in the fall, they jump above in the winter, we still keep them on, and we still give them services, and then they could drop back below. But we are always testing them with those ILPs, tracking the data. And so they might fluctuate, they had a good day, they had a bad day, but we always have that folder at the end of the year that says, this is what we did with the student, here's my bi-weekly data on the student, here's my communication. And sometimes that does give a clearer picture.
I'm just curious, I'm all for the Read-By Grade III, I think it's, we're seeing success with it. I'm just curious, when I look at fall to winter, the improvement from fall to winter generally seems to be there's more improvement than from winter to spring. What's, why do you think that is?
It's like anything, you go on a diet, and you're going to see a big jump right away because you made this drastic change. And then you kind of have that plateau effect, where it tapers off a little bit. We still saw a jump from winter to spring. I agree that the fall to winter is the big jump. And it also has to do with when the spring testing occurs. Like for third grade, that was very close to when they were taking S-Back. And so again, it goes to what trustee Walker said of, you've got a lot of other things going on, it's the end of the year, you've got S-Back testing, and it's one data point.
And I truly think, when you look at this, and I don't think it matters where you go, that movement from winter to spring is always small, because that window's smaller. And so I think that you could get a lot of good information from fall to winter, which is kind of, I think that that's the big, big piece.
Which is interesting, because the funding didn't come until late fall. So if we're seeing the bigger jumps and increases during that time-
And a lot of it, I think, this year was, a lot of the school sites still had tutors, they still had ILPs. So even in the fall, we test the second week of school, they knew who was deficient. So even though we didn't have as much, the funding right then, teachers were still putting ILPs in place for those kids. Those kids were still receiving services, the teachers were still doing the work, even though we hadn't had the funding for some of those extra pieces.
And really, a teacher knows who's reading deficient before they have their MAP data.
Are there any other questions before I hand it over to Valerie?
No, don't go away.
I'm not going anywhere.
Good evening, Valerie Dockery, Director of Grants and Special Projects. So this is hard to read on the screen, but you, I gave this to you in a packet this evening. This is the, it's not the one in your original board pack, but it was, I gave you a copy of the handouts, and then it looks like this. Okay. This is really, I think, important information for you to have, because this shows all of the funding that was allocated under the Read-By Three funding source, SB 391. In the first column, you see all of the funding that was awarded non-competitively. So each district was allowed to request funding for the salary of learning strategists and for contracts, outside contracts with vendors, evidence-based providers, approved vendors, that they had used in 1617. If you had not requested that in 1617 in your competitive grant, you could not ask for it in the continuation grant. So a district like Clark, for example, that obviously asked for a lot of salary for learning strategist and contracts, got the biggest chunk by far of that continuation money. Districts like Carson, who for years have paid for learning strategists out of the general fund, because they're important to the work that we do, only received $213,000, 25%, if you recall from our last meeting, of our six site-based learning strategists, and 100% of Mr. Brigham's salary. So, and you can see Douglas only got $11,000, because they do a similar thing that we do. They provide those positions themselves. And we paid for our contract with Success for All, also out of the general fund, so we could not request that funding either. So you can see where, before we even got, and I went over this at the last meeting, before we even got to the competitive round, $14 million was off the table. And then you get to the competitive round, and nine grants were awarded the remaining $6 million. The group at the bottom that you see is a consortium that all applied together, but then you see the other ones at the top, and then Washoe and White Pine at the very bottom. Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. So, let me go on to the next slide. So in your board packet, you have the subrecipient ranking. So after the last meeting, we went back and we wrote an email to the Department of Education, and we asked for the information on how the grants were awarded, how were the competitive grants given out, how were they ranked, and how were they scored. So we received this document, which I have in two slides up here, because it's really large, and I wanted you to be able to see it. So this is the, what they refer to as Round One. And in Round One, they gave the most weight, although we don't know exactly what the weight is, but it's a pretty large amount of the weight, went to ESSA evidence level. So if you had to get an A in this category, in the second category, District Need, is a 1, 2, or a 3. And you can see that there were some districts that got, that are still in this first round, but they got a 2 for Need. And then the last part is the traditional score that you get when you write the typical competitive grant. So when you look down here at these scores, you see Washoe at the top with the 363, and it goes down from there. You go to the next slide, and it's one page in your board packet, you see Pinecrest, Round Two is above us, because they got an A, the rest are Bs, and you see that we had a 1 for District Need, and our total application points are 376. We had the highest amount, the highest score on the competitive grant. So if you go back up here, Washoe, 363, and we come in at 376. We also have the same Need, 1, as they had here. The difference, they got an A, and we got a B. So we, in that document's request, in the packet that I handed you here, this one with the summary, I just gave you a little, a few of the pieces of what they sent us. So if you go to the first page, the next page in that packet, you see the cover sheet for the review. There were three reviewers on our project, and I'm sure there were three on each project. We had reviewers four, five, and six. Reviewer four gave us a 127 out of 30. Reviewer five gave us a 125 out of 30, and reviewer six gave us a 124 out of 30. So we did very well there. And if you go to the next page in that packet, you'll see that one of the, under Section 5, required appendices, Appendix C, ESSA Evidence Support Form, again, ESSA evidence level on our sheet that's on the board, extensive and clear documentation provided. So they clearly thought that was a strength of the application. And then if you go on in this packet, you'll see the recover sheet of each reviewer's packet, and I highlighted in green where we got the most points for Appendix C, ESSA Evidence Level. We got five points, five out of five for each reviewer. So obviously, we have a lot of questions around this particular item. And just for you, I didn't give you this in your packet, because it's really, really long and lengthy, but this is just a synopsis of the ESSA, it's in your PowerPoint. This is a synopsis of what we asked for in the budget. This is, Appendix C is like a 10-page document where you put in all your budget items, and you reference the level of ESSA research, 1, 2, 3, or 4, and you have to cite, you have to put in the research citation as well. So we only had one item that was a Level 4 alone. Everything else met the 1, 2, and 3, and I threw in some 4s to give it, I thought, more credibility. That I would, will never do again, just lesson learned. So we, you know, present it, we, when we, so this is, this just looks at that overall Appendix C that they're referring to, that we got full credit for. So obviously, the reviewers who reviewed that thought we did a good job with that. So we are still, you know, questioning why we got the Level B. So we had a meeting on Friday, Mr. Stokes and I, with Dr. Canavero and Deputy Superintendent Barley, and Sang Dao Kyo from the Department of Ed, and we asked all these questions around this. We have still not been provided with the evidence of how they got to that B in that first score. We've requested that, and we've been told we'll have that by Friday. But in our meeting, they were not able to give us an explanation of how that occurred. So we're waiting for that information. I don't know if you wanted to add any more to that. Mr. Stokes?
Richard Stokes.
Richard Stokes, for the record. I did talk with, via email, Dr. Canavero, who just reiterated his takeaway from our meeting, which was, he and his staff would go back and research why we did receive that B under ESA evidence level. We are also scheduled tomorrow to go and visit with Mike Wildin, who is the Governor's Chief of Staff. Dr. Canavero will also be there. Whether or not he's able to provide us any answers there, we don't know. But we do have questions as to why we ended up not being funded at all. And we'll be seeking some direction from Mr. Wildin as to what our options for appeal or reconsideration might be.
Yes.
You know, and I guess my thought is, just somebody that used to do grants, you know, everything has to be above board because otherwise you're liable for lawsuits. And so I'm wondering, are we talking to our legal counsel? Because I think that this is something we're going to need to, I think we might have to push the issue, so to speak.
Mr. Pavlakis will be joining us in our meeting tomorrow.
And, and just for the record as well, we were not provided with any evidence of the first two columns, the ESA evidence level and the district need level. And we would like to see that as well. I mean, it's good that we got a 1 there, but we, we were only given data on the third column, which is the typical data that you would get in a competition. There was a very strong rubric. In this competition, there was an RFP, Request for Proposals, that came out with a scoring rubric. Then, a month later, a memo came out with additional requirements around the first two columns. But there was no scoring rubric or anything like that. There was a flow chart, and they were explaining the flow chart to us, which I thought I understood, but apparently did not understand fully. But, but they still were not able to provide how they got, you know, they have to provide how they got to that score in writing, like they did for the other part, which is very clean and very easy to understand. So that's what we're, we're waiting to hear on. The other piece that we have a question about, which is a really big question, which is how we started our conversation, and we will start our conversation tomorrow, is, did the Department of Education have the right to give out money that was non-competitive? In Section 15 of SB 391, it states very clearly that the federal, that the state must provide competitive grants, based on demonstrated need. And it says competitive grants. In our meeting on Friday, we were told that they felt that they were in their, within their rights to do that, and we disagree with that decision. Because that caused this whole next, this only 6 million to be on the table, whereas in the past three years, all of the money was competitive. So I think that's part of this whole equation, too, was that decision. So we have questions around that, and we have questions around ESA evidence and the use of vendors, the reliance on vendors, and, and how we are interpreting ESA evidence through citations. Is that really the intent of what ESA is all about? So we have some questions around, not, because it's not just about this competition, it's about every competition going forward, or every application going forward for funding from the Department of Education. So that ESA evidence piece is really a, a big, big deal.
Well, and I think that when you really think about it, if the law says competitive, then that's a process that you have to follow. You have to go through the RFP process, and you have to be screened by independent reviewers. And if they're going to go ahead and just give funds out based on Need, well, then they need to look at all of the school districts, you know what I mean, and give a, an amount of money that's going to support these programs.
And in those continuation grants, Need was not part of the picture. It was strictly about learning strategists and, and contracts, specifically 300-category contracts with outside vendors. So it's very specific.
So, and then when I was listening to you, so the ESA eviden, so after you had applied, then there were new requirements that were added that weren't initially in the...
After the RFA came out, and before, about a month before the due date, another memo was issued. So there's a question there, too, of how, how is that really legal as well? Because it's not in the original Request for Proposal. So there's a lot of questions on the table. You know, the Department of Ed's, I don't want to speak for them, but their position is that they were, those things were appropriate for them to do in this, in this model. So, so we have a lot of questions around that.
Just a question I have. Would it be appropriate to request the Legislative Council Bureau to do an audit of the Nevada Department of Ed in their competitive grant process?
I can't speak to that, but possibly, possibly. I don't know where that would come from, Mr. Pavlakis. I don't know.
I know that a lot of people are requesting audits of Clark County School District at the public meetings, and it seems that this would be, be something within, it is an agency of the state. If, if they're, if they're awarding competitive, you know, not giving the money as a competitive grant, and, and some of this inexplicable process that's going on, I, I think it would be worth asking.
And asking, and I think that these are our tax funds.
Yes.
Everybody in the state is contributing to this. It's not a department to look and decide willy-nilly how they want to use these funds. There's laws in place. We're all required to pay our property taxes and our sales tax, and, you know, they need to be good stewards of our money, just like we have to be good stewards of Carson City's funds.
So this next slide, I don't, I'm not going to read it to you because it's just the questions we've already had. I just wanted to have them in for the record. You know, why did we, why did they give out 14 million non-competitively? You know, you know, how did they determine that level of ESA evidence? How did they determine the Need level? Why was more emphasis put on the ESA level over the competitive scoring of the review teams? You know, and why, when we had the total, the highest application points, were we not funded? So these are all the questions we're hoping to answer. We don't have all those answers for you tonight. We have a few other answers for you tonight, but not all of them. Mrs. Kima received a phone call today, and again, this was verbal. All of this information is verbal. We don't have anything in writing yet. We turned in this massive consolidated plan. In the turnaround grant, we, turnaround funds, we, we requested over $500,000 for various positions. And we received the funding for the Empire Interventionist position, which was a Read by Three request. You'll see on the next slide. So we are glad we were going to get that. We did not get the tutors we asked for, for Fremont. And we have some partial funding, possibly on some ISs, but we're not sure about that yet for secondary. The two tutors, though, at Fremont, will, one of them, at least one will be absorbed in their, in their site Title I budget, and the other one resigns. So we have, we're in pretty good shape there. And then, yes.
So since that's going to be funded out of Title I funds, then Fritsch and Seeliger aren't going to be able to fund a tutor out of there.
Right. We're going to go to that other slide with their requests, and they had not asked for tutors at Fritsch, yeah. And then our SFA contract that we also put in the turnaround grant, because they are an evidence-based provider, and we figured that we could, those were actually, those were actually covered by some other monies that the state offered us. So we were able to pick that up. So that was good. We still are not completely sure of where we are with the social worker funding. We need more clarification on that, on, on the seven we put in there. So we, we really can't speak to that tonight because we're, we don't have clear information. But we do, we are happy to report that we got full funding for the college, for undercolleging career for dual enrollment programs, which is our jumpstart in our programs we're doing with UNR. And we got full funding, that was like $300,000. The advanced placement, we got the $15,000 we asked for to reduce fees for AP exams. So we got those fully funded. So that was good. And we got most of the money that we asked for, for a work-based learning coordinator. We just were a little bit shy there. We got 74% of that. So that was, those are all really encouraging. So. So then finally going, this is the slide we showed you before, what, when we went back to the principals, you know, knowing that Read by Three was not available, what they wanted. Boarderwick would like an interventionist that was in that, that original Read by Three grant. We took, we crossed out Empire because now they have that position funded. And Mark Twain still wants an interventionist. Again, that was in the Read by Three grant. Fremont thinks they can handle their tutoring situation, and they would just like money to run their, their after-school program because that was really successful for them, as you recall from last meeting. Fritsch would like three tutors. They could, you know, if they could get three, that would be great. And Seeliger would like, instead of tutors, would like their after-school program funded, which is at a little bit lesser amount. So we're down to, you know, the ask from the principals of about 325, 120 right now. But we still, and Mrs. Kima will probably come back up, we still have unknowns on the table with our, our social workers in particular, and, and some other pieces that were in the turnaround grant, because it was really confusing. I want to let her speak to that.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm still concerned if, we're going to have one school. So Fritsch has three SFA tutors, but didn't you say Fremont was going to use Title I funds to pay for a tutor? So...
Yeah. The three Title I schools, the four Title I schools have always had, well, Mark Twain, Empire, and Boarderwick have always had four tutors paid out of Title I money. So we wrote Read by Three, we wrote in four tutors for Seeliger, and four for Fritsch, and two for Fremont. So they had to, to give them two more. In, in looking at, in projecting their, their Title I budgets for FY '19, and I still don't have final figures yet, Dr. Ward feels comfortable that she can squeeze in another one tutor there that was under Read by Three. The other ones resigned, so she'll probably go down to three tutors. Seeliger felt that they had better results with their after-school program, so they would prefer to have money for that versus tutors. And Fritsch, you know, would like three tutors. They would take, they would take any that they could get. But they really felt like that was really important for them. You heard one of the tutors speak last time. So this is, you know, this is that bare bones piece, not obviously everything. The big piece, of course, that's not here, is our after-school, our summer program. You know, that's a big, that's a big piece that's not in this, you know, this list right now.
So we are in danger of supplanting with the tutor issue, is what my concern is?
No. I actually got a fine, I, I actually asked for a, a review on that from the Department of Ed, and they told me no because the, the money had gone away. And I have that in writing. So yes, I did ask that question, Trustee Walker, because I was very concerned about the big S-word myself. So yes. Yes. Yes, absolutely. Would you like to add anything?
As Valerie Dockery said, that the state still has some more information to give us about certain parts of the grant, especially around the social worker piece. But, so it's, it's just that, if we're still finding out more information. So we don't, we're ready for any kind of questions that you might have at this time.
Okay. I'd like to ask Nate, the 325 that we would probably, may be voting on tonight. You're the expert. You're the one running the show. Is this where you would put this money? You showed us the results. Is this where it would best go? And I, I respect the principals, you know, what they're, they're asking for. I'm asking you, though, as, as directing this program, is this going to continue to give us the results that we're getting?
Not to take a safe answer out, but I do know that every site is different, and everything up there basically is putting a small number of students with a tutor, an interventionist, or a teacher after-school. And that's kind of the focus of the service, is trying to get more small group. If a principal feels that after-school is better than tutors, I fully support that. It's the idea of, instead of 20, 22 to 1 in a classroom, you might be down to 8 to 1. That's going to be beneficial for those students. And at some sites, they may have better luck with tutoring versus after-school. I was lucky at Empire. We always had four tutors. And we always had amazing results out of our tutors because they were working with one or two kids at a time. If Fremont, you know, they want after-school, Seeliger wants after-school, I would trust that data has been ran, and I know at the end of the year, they did. They looked at data to see which of their programs was most effective. And if those principals feel that after-school is the biggest bang for their buck, it's a reduction in basically student-to-teacher ratio and going to get a good impact.
Okay. And, and, you know, Sue, at the, as you introduced this subject, you said we may want to wait until the July 10th meeting. What would we gain at the July 10th meeting? What more information? Because I don't know about this, the social workers has anything to do with this.
No, it doesn't. But we don't know if there's other considerations that the board wants, if all the funding isn't there to make them full-time employees. We have a backup plan for that particular piece. If we can't do that, they go back to being contractors until the next legislative session occurs. And then we have, we have, we, we watch and support what happens through that process and the Governor's Safety Team, you know, those, those kinds of things. We just wanted to give you that option if you wanted to have more time, if you wanted to have a report as to what occurs tomorrow after our meeting with the Governor's Chief of Staff. So there's that piece. There's just more clarification on the grants.
And, you know, Mr. Stokes, I'm, I'm really curious to see if money doesn't show up somewhere. It sounds to me like there were some pretty big mistakes made in the review. And so I, I'm much more comfortable waiting to see the result of that meeting tomorrow you have.
Well, I know Mike Wildin knows the difference between competitive and non-competitive grants. I'm not sure, you know, how much into the Department of Ed, but, but I do know that would ring a bell with him.
Sure. And then there's also been that, that possible request to ask LCB about doing an audit. There could be time where we could explore that option with tomorrow's meeting as well. So that's just something, something to think about. As far as the items that are on that list, all of those items provide direct support to the students. And I did ask the principals to run their data, to figure out which portion of their day had the most, what part of what they were missing had the most impact that they were doing this year. So if they implemented after, after-school program, and they never had that before, and they looked at their data, and their data surpassed something else, that's what they put on their list.
And if I could add, like, for example, if you look at Boarderwick, they have four tutors in their Title I budget, and they have the 21st Century After-School program. So the complement to that for them is that teacher interventionist. If you look at Mark Twain, I could say the same thing. For Fremont, again, they had, they had, you know, two tutors. They're able to squeeze in a third. They don't have the 21st Century After-School program, and they had a really robust program. It was really effective this year. And Fritsch, of course, doesn't have either Title I or 21st Century. And so, so you can see that there, we're also looking at all the different resources that they have, and they're coming up with the things that are going to complement what they already have. And with, as Mrs. Kima said, with the whole focus being on direct services to students. And if you read SB 391, Section 15, it says that that's what the grants are supposed to be for, in addition to professional development, is to provide support for students in all of these areas of reading instruction. But in reality, what is happening is that, you know, most of the money has gone into indirect services to kids, actually, is what has happened.
I'm just wondering, Mrs. Kima, you know, both Fritsch and Seeliger are non-Title schools, but there's a big difference in the amount they're asking for. Is there... Is there? I'm wondering if there isn't more support that Seeliger's going to need that they haven't. I think that seems to me like a very conservative ask comparing the other schools.
There are some things that we're going to be working on with Seeliger during the school year. There's a few pieces. Our Title schools have been used to having tutors. They've been used to running a system with tutoring and have that down pat. Seeliger's fairly new to that particular process. Mr. Brown was familiar with the tutoring process from being at Fremont. So he, he was able to implement that at a little, at a different pace, maybe than what Seeliger did. And so what Mr. Brigham and I, we have a plan to take, work with Seeliger on that tutoring piece, showing them exactly how to set that up. We don't want to put money into something until we can get that set up for them in a proper format. Sure. And, you know, just something to be thinking about when Mr. Brigham was talking about the business rules changing as far as what kind of tests the students were taking, that's one thing. And, but there's been a lot of talk about transient rates. So just for your information and for the public's, is that 18.7% is the district's transient rate. Our highest is at Boarderwick at 23.4. Our lowest is at Mark Twain at 13.8. So, and everybody else is in between there. So just, just kind of, kind of keep that, keep that in your, in your mind as far as the number of students. In some cases, it's an entire class of students that comes and goes for that particular school.
And how does that compare? I mean, we've probably asked this question before, but how does that compare with other districts throughout our state?
Well, the state's at, let's see, the state's at 23, 23% transient rate. So Boarderwick mirrors the state. Everybody else is a little bit below that.
A question would be, if we don't vote in this tonight, now, do we have the staff in place now and we just need the money to keep them in place? Or is this something that we have to, after the vote, go hire? That's, I guess, a question.
There'll be a combination of both. When we were notified that we did not get the grant, we did let those folks know, especially the paraprofessionals that were tutors in schools that were not funded, that there are quite a few paraprofessional positions open in the district. And if they would want something that's more permanent, to, to feel free to go ahead and apply for those. So I know Mr. Delphin has said that many of those paraprofessionals have been placed in schools with other open positions. And the interventionist, there's interventionist, there's pieces that we will need to advertise and hire. I don't know if Mr. Delphin wants to talk about the pool that's out there at this time. Hope, okay. Everybody's competing.
Okay, for the kids' sake, we want to be ready to go when the school year starts.
Yes.
Or does any of this money, like the summer program, would it apply to this summer for the after-school for Seeliger? Or is that next summer?
The current money that we have for this year's summer school has to end June 30th. That money goes away, is finished. Yes, in a few days.
So what we would be voting on, could they continue the summer program then, this year?
We did not put in that as a request. While we did, do, do have good data from our school, summer school program, we did not put that particular request because of the cost would add to the bottom line that you see there on the screen. Also, there were some other considerations. We have three out of the six schools with some heavy-duty construction next year. It would be in the best interest of that school if they didn't have summer school on their location. We would add additional busing to other locations. So we thought, based on what's most important, it's kind of like our day job. Our day job is that, that school, that 180 school days that we have with that student, that they're required to be there, the teachers are required to be there. And we thought if we put direct services to complement each school's program and made that our priority, we would go with that first and then take a year break from summer school because of the construction and because of the cost.
Okay. Next question, if you're successful in your dealings with the governor's office, and and there is funding, I'm saying if we voted, first of all, if we voted for the contingency, and AG, you might want to answer this, but it took about six months to get this money coming back in, can we replace it in our contingency fund? Or what's the process?
So if you authorize the contingency account, our funding, you, and then we eventually receive that funding, as long as we can make it retroactive to the start of the school year, which I don't see why we wouldn't be able to, it effectively reimburses the general fund for that. So at that point, you'd be putting, putting that money?
Move expenditures into the grant.
Into the grant fund, right.
And then, I don't know what your process is.
Yeah, I mean, at that point, it's just a, we would move the expenses into the grant, and it would just be a budget transfer to put the money back into contingency. So the, then that effect then is zero. I mean, the, the grant itself will be paying for it.
But then, we wouldn't be able to ask again because we are already asked and approved, right? So not till the next budget system could we ask?
Oh, so we can only ask once for the contingency?
So you're, when you're authorizing the contingency, you're, you're basically just authorizing the sum of money for some purpose, right? So if, if we are able to then put this money back, that kind of replenishes the contingency back to $1 million. If you decide to authorize it again for another reason, it's available.
All right. Unless there's any other questions, you know, Brian.
I have one other comment, President Swirzick. I just think, I, I think it's not realistic to think that this grant is going to be reallocated because every district's already been informed of what they're going to get. Would there be other monies possibly available through the Department of Ed? Possibly. Possibly if they have, they indicated if funds came back that were in spent this year in Read by Three, they could be reallocated. There's going to be some other funding maybe available in the fall. But I don't, I don't think, unless I'm really mistaken, that we're going to see this whole real, this whole grant, like, thrown out and redone, you know, unless like something like a lawsuit possibly happened or something like that. I just want to say that because I just, I want people to be realistic about what expectations are. You know, Clark County has $11 million awarded to them, Washoe has two or three million. We're not going to see that change. I would be very surprised.
And that's why we have legal counsel, and that's why the state has a rainy day fund. You know, they have the interim finance committee and, yeah, things like that. But I'm just, okay, we'll take it a step at a time.
No, I'm just here in case you got questions.
So if, so this is the stripped-down desires list, and then, I guess that plain and simple, just to sum it up for me, we'll have less services regardless for the Read by Grade Three, right? Okay. So no matter what, but this is what we're saying our absolute essentials are.
There's no other comments, questions? All entertaining motion?
Does, do we have to go contingency fund here, too? I mean, or, or I know, I'm, I'm more into waiting unless we absolutely, I'm not getting the sense that we need to hire these folks tomorrow. So just my personal opinion. And then also, I mean, there's a contingency, but we, we also just have the budget, or is it, is it something that we can't do?
So the, there's, with the, the board-approved budget, these positions and funding for it didn't exist. Really, that, that contingency fund represents the kind of opportunity that you would have to, to kind of create new money for a new purpose that wasn't, wasn't in there.
Well, you know, we could wait. But we have a school year about ready to start. And we got people out here, if they've left and gone to other positions, we have to fill. We've got to do some things for the sake of the kids to be ready when they start school. Otherwise, it's always, we're always behind.
Just a question, if there is a lawsuit involved, does moving money from the contingency to pay for this show proof of the damages? Or does it, if, if they say, oh, you already had the money to pay for that, does it, does it eliminate the damages that would be?
I don't know that it eliminates the damages, but just kibitzing with Mr. Stokes, I agree with Valerie that there probably isn't going to be a restructuring of the award that was previously made. But it seems to me that unless there's an operational issue that would mitigate in favor of committing the funds tonight, my recommendation would be to wait until tomorrow's meeting and take, possibly take action on, on the July 10th meeting.
Just as an aside, the day that we found out that we were not funded, in that afternoon's telephone call to the Department of Ed, there was an offer of some money. It was obviously nowhere near the amount that we needed. When we met on Friday, we were asked the question, how much would you need? So I mean, there's this hint that there may be some other way to provide additional funding, even though it may not come up to the same level of, of what we ask for through our competitive process. So I think it would be helpful for us to kind of wait and see, and, but, but probably no more than our next meeting. I mean, I, I do recognize the issue that we have with trying to find staff and trying to at least build what has been requested by our principals in, in lack of the funding that we asked for. But I do appreciate the questions and your comments and the considerations here because we do have a lot of confidence in what's going on and in our people and in the services that have been provided to our students, and we would hate to see that end.
Okay, Ryan?
I got one more thing, too. Ms. Dockery, I think you got some real good evidence here that you did outstanding job on the application, so, well, sometimes we don't always win when we do well.
Well, it was really surprising to see the high rating from the reviewers. It really was, considering that we didn't get funding. That, that really did shock me when I saw it because that's not at all what I expected to see. So thank you. I think it's really important for us to also remember as we go forward that Read by Three requirements are, are still legal requirements. We still have to do them regardless of whether we get money. I think that really needs to always stay out there in front. We've been so fortunate over the last three years to be able to support that effort with large sums of money, and we've done, we've been really good stewards of that money, and we will continue to be. There will be another round next year of Read by Three. We will be ready for that one. So I think if we can, you know, at the next meeting, we'll have more information, and if we can create kind of that stopgap between years, and then there's also maybe some other funding that comes out in the fall that we can, you know, hopefully have, have, have things held together until we can get to that, those next sources in the next biennium. So.
I'd just like to add, if we, if we wait until the July 10th meeting, which I, which I, in my opinion, I think is probably makes some sense, I think you guys have done a great job presenting the benefits of the work we've done with Read by Third Grade. And it takes a lot of time, I know it's summer now, but it takes a lot of time out of everybody's schedule to put all this stuff together. And I can't speak for everybody on the board, but we know what we're doing in Read by Grade Three works, and we're proud of what everybody's doing. So I don't think, really, we just need the numbers on what we need to do. I don't think we need a presentation justifying the, or the Read by Grade Three effort.
Yeah, well, we can come back to you with any results of any of the meetings we've had and any budgetary changes. You know, so we'll just keep it to that, at that July 10th meeting. I, I'm all for that. I have other work I need to do. And I think that's the really frustrating part about this is because there is so much else that we have to, to do and be part of, and that we're spending so much time in this, defending ourselves in this process. But I also think we need to do that because there's a bigger issue at stake for the next, for the next piece of, of money that comes out and how that's handled. So there's a really, even though it's a lot of time and effort, it's, it's, there's a bigger question out there that, that needs to be addressed.
Okay, Richard?
I was just going to say, Mr. President, that I can provide a brief written update after our meeting tomorrow so that you have that at your disposal.
Okay, so this item was for discussion and possible actions, and we're taking no action. So we'll see you again on the, on the 10th, July 10th. And thank you for all the information, so.
Thank you.
And Nate, keep up the good work.
Yes, thank you, Nate.
Recommended approval of the 2018-22 tentative agreement for two Carson City School District bargaining groups, and that's the Carson City Administrators Association, CCAA, and the Orange County Education Association, OCEA, for possible action.
Thank you, Trustee Swirzick, members of the board and staff. Jose Delphin, for the record. I, it's an interesting time to be in Nevada, and it's a twisty time to be in education. Before I do Agenda 15, I want to share with you that I was in Las Vegas UNLV to teach this weekend, and I can tell you that I've never seen a more downtrodden teaching staff that I taught at UNLV because of all the twists and turns and politics and money. So it's not just affecting us here in Carson City, but I want to say across the state. We're living up to our namesake, which is battle-born. So with that, I want to spread the good cheer that we did really well, I believe, with OCEA and CCAA with regard to negotiations. We did a little different style of IBB, which is interest-based bargaining, with our federal mediator, Stephen Kessler. And I just want to say, I, I thought the negotiations went really smoothly with Mr. Wallace and his team, and Mr. Sadler and his team. And with that, I would definitely want to recommend approval of a four-year agreement for these two bargaining units. And hopefully, by July 10th, I'll have the rest. And I will love to take any questions you may have.
I don't know if there's any questions that we would have at this time. You know, I would just entertain a motion, then we'll open this up for discussion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the 2018 to 2022 tentative agreements with the following two CCSD bargaining groups, Carson City Administrators Association, CCAA, and the Orange County Educational Association, OCEA.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Now for discussion. I'll, I'll first ask if anyone in the audience would like to come forward.
Brian Wallace, President, OCEA. Mr. President, trustees, thank you. Without the seven of you, we would not be in the position we are this evening, being able to move forward with a four-year contract. I think that takes a lot of pressure off all the parties, probably helps AG out quite a bit with being able to look at some planning and not worrying about where we're going to be with the teaching staff at this point in time. But again, every time I come up here and then get the opportunity to address each of you, it's always thank you because we have your support. We know that, we see you in the schools and such. you in the schools and such. We know we have the district's support. It was a really easy negotiation, one of the quickest, which was really nice. And part of that was also due to having Jordan Walsh, Walsh on board with us. She's very, very easy to work with, cleaned up a lot of language that needed to be cleaned up. So she went through like all 80 pages plus of the CBA to redline it, clean it up, modernize it, just all kinds of little editorial changes, which don't seem significant until you see them all being done. But again, it just continues to speak volumes that we really are in this together. It echoes what Ms. Pryor was saying earlier, that it really is the teachers, the boots on the ground, the, you know, all the men and women in the trenches, all the Q-sayings that go along with that. But what really helps is, is this district's dedication and the city's dedication, as you know from the joint meeting also, that we want quality educators. We want to be able to retain them. And these are always the, the good steps. The money isn't everything, but we know it's always going to help, and help with retention, and help with recruitment, and then hopefully help with keeping them here when it comes to home prices and everything that we see out there with our economic situations. So thank you again, and we really appreciate working with each and every one of you.
Thank you, Brian. Jose, any additional, any comments, questions from the board?
Just that, you know, now that I'm involved in stuff that's such statewide and even on a national level, it just makes my heart sore to know that the relationship that we have with our associations is such a good relationship. And it's been a give and take. And there's times where you guys have given up, you know, 2% of your salary, and then we ended up getting that money and we gave it back. But it's that, that whole thing, when people say it's all about the kids, it's true here in Carson City. And there's no animosity between the, the associations and the boards and the administration. And it just, it's really nice to see, because some of the horror stories that I hear, and even if you bring up association, when you're at a national meeting, they're like, oh, you don't talk to those people, do you? And it's like, well, yeah, I said, we have a really good relationship. But it's interesting, the, the things that we see outside of our little world. And, and it's, it's really nice to see everybody working together for our kids. And it's shown. I mean, our grades and our graduation rates have gone up, and, and I'm just really proud that we're all, we're all adults and we're looking at the big picture. So thank you. And, and I'm looking forward to the four years of not having to go through this, too.
Not only, I think, as a board, do we appreciate the relationship we have, and as smooth as this is, but to piggyback on what Stacy said, when we go to NASB conferences or you just talk to other school board trustees or executives in, in other districts, and we tell them the kind of relationship we have, they're, they're always kind of caught off guard and surprised. And so I think that says something about how hard everybody here is working, you know, to work together. And, and quite frankly, this four-year deal, anything we can do to free up AJ's time to, you know, because if you've noticed, we, we've seen kind of a lag in the graphs and whatnot, and maybe this will free up some time to get more of those.
See no other further, no further comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Sorry, I just wanted to mention that I have an, my firm has an item on 16A, and since I have a pecuniary, pecuniary interest, I'm going to abstain from, from voting on 16A.
I'd like to make a motion that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments from the audience, public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very quickly, going on to the Agenda, Item 17, informational items. We have not many, but any questions, concerns? Agenda item number 18, requests for future agenda topics?
Not really a topic, but maybe just an update, and it could be in your report, Mr. Stokes, at next meeting. Just the hiring status, how we're doing, if we're getting full, if we're not getting full. Just kind of a, a update.
We can, we can provide a, a report to the board.
And just a reminder to turn in nominations for the NASB awards, because August 15th is going to be here really quick.
I'm glad you brought that up. If, if I don't receive any, no, if I don't receive any by next week, I'm, I'm just going to sit down with Richard, we're going to get this thing moved, moved along. We just can't wait to the end.
So by next week, you just want names? You don't want the letters and stuff, right?
Yeah, right.
Just names for, for the actual departments? Okay, I can do that.
I thought you wanted you.
Okay, Agenda, Agenda item number 19, without objection, we are adjourned.
One of these days, just to stress Stacy about an objection.